In the midst of the busy and complex world we live, we ask that you would help to guide us and provide us with the wisdom necessary to make the very best decisions for our Garden Grove community. Amen.
Would you please turn and face the flag? Hand over a heart. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now, before we get into presentations, we'll now quickly reassess over to do the housing authority business. So I will hand it over to Chair Bridgum.
Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Dovin.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Tanwin.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Tran.
Here.
Vice Chair Kimwin.
Here.
And Chair Bridgum.
Here. Can we move on to oral communications? Is there anybody here who wishes to address the Housing Authority? Seeing none, we will close oral communications and move on to consent. Entertain, or...
Move to approve?
We have a motion in a second. I guess we do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Dovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanwin?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
And Chair, Vice Chair Kimwin?
Yes.
And Chair Bridgum. Motion received. Nine yes votes.
And let me just verify, the motion was for both consent items, correct?
Yes.
All right. Items for consideration, 3A.
Item 3A is adoption of a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement between the Garden Grove Housing Authority and the City of Garden Grove for real property located at 11390 through 11400 Stanford Avenue. And this is a joint action item with the City Council, and that is item 7A. And Monica Corver-Rudis is here to provide the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you is a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement between the Garden Grove Housing Authority and the City of Garden Grove for the acquisition of real property located at 11390 through 11400 Stanford Avenue in the City of Garden Grove. The City of Garden Grove is the owner of said property, and it has conducted an appraisal which determined the property's fair market value at $8,550,000 and the highest and best use for the property as multifamily residential development. Per Surplus Land Act guidelines issued by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, otherwise known as HCD, city-owned property can be declared as exempt surplus land if it is transferred to another local agency for the agency's use. On June 13, 2023, the City Council approved a resolution declaring the property to be exempt surplus land and submitted its determination to HCD for its review and approval prior to the sale of the property. On June 22, 2023, HCD notified the city via a letter that it concurred with the city's determination, thereby declaring the property exempt surplus land. Under its functions as housing successor to the former Garden Grove Agency for Community Development, the Housing Authority has the power and authority to acquire property for the production, improvement, or preservation of affordable housing. The Housing Authority intends to acquire the city-owned parcel at its fair market value of $8,550,000, of which $3 million will be paid in cash and the remainder in the form of a promissory note. The property is subject to a ground lease as security associated with the city's lease revenue bonds, Series 2015A. The sale of the property will be contingent on substitution of collateral used to secure the bond in exchange for its parcel. Tonight, the Housing Authority is asked to adopt a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement between the Housing Authority and the city, and authorize the director to execute the purchase and sale agreement, grant deed, promissory note, and any pertinent documents. That concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions of staff? None? Okay.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
When we take action on this, is it for both items, for both the council and/or do we have to do it separately for any reason?
No, we'll, we'll have a short, shorter report at the council level, and you can just go straight into the vote at that time.
Got it. Okay.
We have a motion. We have a second. Let's do the roll call vote.
And I'm sorry, who is the second? Thank you. Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Dovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanwin?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kimwin?
Yes.
And Chair Bridgum. Motion received. Nine yes votes.
And we'll move on to matters. Do we have any matters from the Commission?
None.
None? You sure? Okay. Seeing none, we will adjourn. Our next scheduled meeting for the Housing Authority will be Tuesday, July 25. And back to the council.
All righty. Thank you. We will reconvene City Council. Before we get into presentations, tonight we held a reception recognizing the winners of the annual Garden Grove Gems Home Beautification Contest. On behalf of the City Council, I would like to thank everyone who participated, and I give a lot of credit to the homeowners working hard to keep their neighborhoods looking great. Before we get started on tonight's presentations, I would like to publicly recognize the gem winners and runners-up. And I've asked Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to please announce the names of the winners and the runner-ups.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. I'm very pleased to introduce the winners and runners-up for the second annual Garden Grove Gems program. Congratulations to each of you, and when I call your name, please come forward to receive a certificate of recognition, followed by a group photo with our City Council. So for District One, our winner is Verna Chumley. Verna, would you like to come forward? And you can bring your husband with you, or anybody else that's in your group. Okay. So you can just come on forward, and then we're going to pass out certificates. And then just stay up here after you get your certificate, and then I'm just going to continue to call names after this. Okay. So our second recipient for District One, our runner-up, Debbie Morse. And any family members that you have with you are welcome to join you as well. And then our District Two winner, Manuel Garcia Jr., please come forward. And then we have our District Two runner-up, Jose and Gloria Perez, as well. Okay. And following Jose and Gloria, our District Three winner, Gary and Sharon Sunda. Okay. And then our District Three runner-up, John Rodriguez, please come forward. And then our District Four winner, Irene and Mitch Magna, Churnus, Magna Churnus. And then our District Four runner-up, Kurt Kraft. And our District Five winner, Caesar and Raquel Mata. And District Five runner-up, Patrick and Gigi Sullivan. And then following Patrick and Gigi Sullivan, we have our District Six winner, Dorothy Wilson. And following Dorothy Wilson, our District Six runner-up, Christina Lu. Okay. It looks like we have everybody. Okay. Perfect. And then the city applauds all of your dedicated efforts to keeping our community looking its very best. Congratulations to all of you.
Yeah. George is like, oh, yes.
Yeah. Would you guys like to...
Yeah. She's a lady right here, over here, sort of right behind her, and then right here, sort of like behind you.
You guys might think that's...
Yeah.
I got you. He's a little overboard. And a couple numbers, step me if you can. Perfect. And then compliment with Joe. Very good. Perfect. Couple shots right here, guys.
Awesome. Thank you.
All my gems, winners, and runners-up?
Oh, you too. Come on back. Thank you for the honor.
You're welcome.
January 14.
You're awesome.
Thank you.
All my gems, winners, and runners-up?
Oh, you too. Come on back.
You're welcome.
January 14.
You're awesome.
We're going to pack all the presents in your...
Well, yes, for it.
It's kind of weird calling it that.
I have to change my name, too.
All righty. We will now move on to presentations, starting with 1A, which is a community spotlight in recognition of the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association for organizing the 2023 Garden Grove Strawberry Festival.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize a devoted group of individuals who have played a significant role in continuing the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival's reputation as a signature event in the community. Would President Andrea Perez and the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association and the directors all join us tonight? Please come forward. Okay. The Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association is a nonprofit organization dedicated to raising funds for local organizations that provide services for children, youth, and seniors. For 63 years, community leaders have volunteered hundreds of hours planning and coordinating the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival to give back to the community. This year's theme was celebrating kindness, and an estimated 250,000 people attended the four-day festival, with many nonprofit groups benefiting from the sales and the game booths. The Garden Grove Strawberry Festival also held their special Kids Day when the festival was open one day early to kids with special needs for free entertainment, food, and rides. The Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association has raised over $7 million for local charities since its formation in 1958, and pledges to donate approximately $100,000 to the community each year. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association with a special gift in appreciation and recognition of their tireless efforts in organizing the 2023 Garden Grove Strawberry Festival, and thank you so much for all of your service.
Would you guys like to all pile up in here for some photos?
Sure.
This is very pretty.
You should be in the front with that thingy.
Put the glasses back on, Josh.
Okay. Ready? Time to go now? Okay. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for recognizing the board. As you know, we are a dedicated group of volunteers who plan and execute the festival. However, we would not be able to do this accomplishment without the incredible, excuse me, we would not be able to accomplish this incredible event without the support and partnerships we have with the city, the Police Department, and the Orange County Fire Authority. So I want to thank each group for the continued support and partnership. I also want to thank the Police Department for making sure that everyone's safe and being present at the festival. And I'd like to thank Janet and her team for always being available to help us when we need the help. And lastly, I want to thank the community for supporting our festival through the years. So, thank you.
All right. Before we go to 1B, I've got to pull forward item 4A from our consent calendar, which pertains to that. And so can I get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Call the vote?
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. So now that's official. We'll move on to 1B, which is a community spotlight in recognition of Arlene Martin and Howard Whitaker for being named the 2023 Strawberry Ball Queen and King and Senior Volunteer Woman and Man of the Year.
All right. With that, I'd like to call forward Howard Whitaker. And I don't believe Arlene Martin is with us this evening, so Howard, you're just going to kind of stand up here on your own here. So...
You've got to wear the crown, though.
We're very proud to recognize Howard.
I'd like to thank everybody for nominating me and putting me through this. I've enjoyed it, though. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Hold on, one sec. We'd like to say a few words.
Yeah. Put your crown on, and we're going to say some nice things. So every year, the city's H. Lewis Lake Senior Center hosts the Strawberry Ball to honor the new Strawberry Ball King and Queen and recognize them for their dedication to volunteerism with local organizations. And it's the city's privilege to honor two exceptional individuals. And I'm going to start with Arlene, who's not here, so I'm going to say a little bit about her, and then we're going to talk about you, Howard. So Arlene was born in Fremont, Ohio, and has been a resident of Garden Grove for 48 years. And after retiring as a mail carrier, she dedicated her time to volunteer and help the Garden Grove community. Arlene has been a member of the Assistance League of Garden Grove for many, many years, and currently holds the position of Assistant Treasurer. She's also a member of the Garden Grove Emblem Club. And now, Howard, we're going to recognize you, originally from, let's see, Saskatchewan, Canada. Howard has been a resident of Garden Grove for 70 years. He's a former U.S. Marine and served as a member of the city's Traffic Commission and Planning Commission in the 1970s. He's also a businessman who once owned and operated an automotive business in Garden Grove for 35 years. Howard spends his free time volunteering and providing service to his community. He's been a member of the Garden Grove Elks Lodge for over 64 years, where he received the Blake Berger Award, the Elk of the Month Award, the Fred Morrison Award, and the Grand Exalted Ruler Award. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present a proclamation to Howard for his selection as the 2023 Garden Grove Strawberry Ball King and Senior Volunteer Man of the Year. Congratulations, Howard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah. All righty. Item 1C, Public Safety Update for the upcoming July 4th holiday, as presented by the Police Department and Orange County Fire Authority.
Evening. We have Captain Bill Allison and OCFA Battalion Chief Mike Ewen providing that presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm here tonight to give you an overview of our upcoming 4th of July enforcement of illegal fireworks within the city. As you know, the Police Department and Fire Department for years have worked in a collaboration in order to lessen the risks due to illegal fireworks. The following is a brief synopsis of what has been done thus far this year, as well as the operational plan the evening of the 4th of July. Since early June, the Garden Grove Police Department, Orange County Fire Authority, have worked with media resources and City Hall public relations, with public education, safety flyers, and illegal firework notices regarding the upcoming 4th of July holiday. No illegal firework flyers began going out with residents in their water billings as well. Handout flyers are also posted at multiple city facilities. No illegal firework banners are posted in several thoroughfares within the city, as well as our electronic signboards. Our campaign has gone out via the city, the Police Department, and Fire Department's social media websites as well. Notices are at each Garden Grove Park notifying citizens that fireworks of any kind are prohibited within the park area. On the night of the event, park sprinklers will be turned on to deter people from using the park for any kind of firework usage, as well as to prevent any risk of fire itself. Detectives continue to monitor ahead of time social media and private online sales sites, looking for anyone attempting to sell illegal fireworks. If any site entries are located, detectives will work in an undercover capacity to make contact, effect an arrest, and seize any illegal fireworks. This year, there will be 29 permitted Safe and Sane Firework booths throughout the city. As well, the city has authorized 16 block parties throughout the city as also. Officers will make contact at each block party the night on the 4th and verify that regulations are being met, street access is being adhered to for any emergency response. On the evening of the 4th, the Police Department will deploy an additional 24 officers, two sergeants, two civilian staff, in a directed enforcement operation for illegal fireworks. These officers are evenly divided throughout the city to handle calls strictly for fireworks. These directed enforcement officers will also be accompanied by the additional 20 patrol officers normally assigned to patrol that evening. These officers on that evening of the 4th are also directed to take any enforcement action they see subject to calls for service. Persons identified discharging illegal fireworks will be fined an administrative citation with a $1,000 fine accompanying it. Any violations at a block party location will result in citations also being issued and the immediate shutdown of the block party. With these measures in place, the Police Department hopes that it will ensure the residents have a safe and enjoyable 4th of July. And I'm going to hand it over to my counterpart here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager Kim, and city staff. My name is Mike Yan, Battalion Chief from Orange County Fire Authority, currently assigned to Battalion 11 here in the City of Garden Grove on the sea shift. I'm here to talk a little bit about some OCFA's educational programs, some safety tips, and our July 4th operational plan. First, with some of the public education, you might have seen some of these flyers that's been handed out, those have been posted, also some banners at some local parks, as well as across some streets. We also have some social media campaigns going on, including in our own ocfa.org website. We've also done a PSA with Garden Grove Police Department on Garden Grove Channel 3. We've handled, we've handed out a couple of press releases, and on June 30th, OCFA will also be doing a press conference on the safety of July 4th and some things to be aware of. We have a lot of educational programs going on. Some of these programs involve our firefighters, our inspectors, our educational specialists, and this includes fire extinguisher management, how to use them, what the difference is between legal and illegal fireworks, what's a safe and sane firework, and the proper extinguishment of fireworks, which simply includes having a water bucket and dousing it. So we have a lot of educational campaigns going on. The Fire Department's not all about a fire engine or fire truck going down the street with lights and sirens and waking everybody up, but this campaign started months ago. And at the end, I'll tell you the success of it. Next, part of the campaign is also this weekend, we will be hitting all 29 vendors that sell the fireworks, and we'll be doing a safety inspections. Our on-duty crews will be doing that, and they will be also giving education on case something happens, what to do. Next, a couple of safety tips for those listening. Something we want to get out is, the last three years, 59% of fireworks-related incidents have resulted in spread into the brush, the grass, any vegetation. As we know, that could be dangerous, put in any wind on it, and it could start hitting the structures. So that's very careful. Part of our program is, if you're going to do safe and sane fireworks, to do it in a place that doesn't have a possibility of spread to vegetation. The other thing that we noticed in Orange County is, when people discard fireworks, they put them in a trash can or dumpsters, and those usually are butted up against structures. Move those trash cans, dumpsters away, and that will prevent the spread to structures. The next part I'd like to talk about is some historical, last year, within Orange County, there was 47 fireworks-related injuries that needed medical attention and some kind of hospital intervention. With our partners in law enforcement in Orange County, over 6,000 pounds of fireworks were confiscated, illegal fireworks were confiscated, and I think that's a great testament to our partnership with law enforcement. That number is just a number, but I just want to throw it out there. Think about how many houses were saved taking those illegal fireworks off the street, and how many households were saved. The last part is, I want to talk about what OCFA is... These officers are evenly divided throughout the city to handle calls strictly for fireworks. These directed enforcement officers will also be accompanied by the additional twenty patrol officers normally assigned to patrol that evening. These officers on that evening of the Fourth are also directed to take any enforcement action they see subject to calls for service. Persons identified discharging illegal fireworks will be fined an administrative citation with a thousand dollar fine accompanying it. Any violations at a block party location will result in citations also being issued and the immediate shutdown of the block party. With these measures in place, the Police Department hopes that it will ensure the residents have a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July. And I'm going to hand it over to my counterpart here.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager Kim, and city staff. Uh, my name is Mike Yan, Battalion Chief from Orange County Fire Authority, currently assigned to Battalion Eleven here in the city of Garden Grove on the sea shift. Uh, I'm here to talk a little bit about, uh, some OCFA's educational programs, uh, some safety tips, and July, our July Fourth operational plan. Uh, first, with, uh, some of the public education, uh, you might have seen some of these flyers that, that's been handed out, those have been posted, uh, also some banners at some local parks, as well as some, uh, across some streets. Uh, we also have some social media campaigns going on, including in our own OCFA.org website. Uh, we've also done a PSA, uh, with Garden Grove Police Department on, uh, Garden Grove Channel Three. Uh, we've handled, uh, we've handed out a couple of press releases, and on June thirtieth, OCFA will also be doing a, uh, press conference on the safety of July Fourth and, um, some things to be aware of. We have a lot of educational programs going on, some of these programs, uh, with, involve our firefighters, our inspectors, our educational specialists, um, and this includes fire extinguisher, um, management, how to use them, uh, what the difference is between legal and illegal fireworks, what's a safe and sane firework, um, and the proper extinguishment of fire, uh, fireworks, uh, which simply includes having a water bucket and dousing it. So, we have a lot of edu- educational campaigns going on. Um, the Fire Department's not all about a fire engine or fire, fire truck going down the street with lights and sirens and waking everybody up, but this campaign started months ago, um, and, uh, at the end, I'll tell you the success of it. Um, next, um, part of the campaign is also, uh, this weekend, we will be hitting all twenty-nine, um, uh, vendors that sell, uh, the fireworks, and we'll be doing a safety inspections. Our on-duty crews will be doing that, and they will be also giving education on case something happens, uh, what to do. Next, a couple of safety tips for those listening, uh, something we want to get out is, uh, the last three years, fifty-nine percent of fireworks-related incidents have resulted a spread into the brush, the grass, any vegetation, as we know that could be dangerous, put in any wind on it, and it could, uh, start hitting the structures. So, uh, that's very careful, uh, we, part of our program is, if you're, if you're going to do safe and sane fireworks, to do it in a place that doesn't, uh, have a possibility to spread to vegetation. Um, the other thing that we noticed, um, i- in, in Orange County is when people discard fireworks, they put them in a trash can or dumpsters, and those usually are budded up against structures. Move those struc- uh, trashcans, dumpsters away, uh, and that will prevent the spread to structures. Um, the next part I'd like to talk about is some historical, last year, um, within Orange County, there was forty-seven fireworks, uh, related injuries that needed medical attention and some kind of hospital intervention. Uh, with our partners in law enforcement in Orange County, over six thousand pounds of fireworks were confiscated, illegal fireworks were confiscated, and, uh, I think that's a great testament, uh, to our partnership with law enforcement. Uh, that number is just a number, but I just want, uh, to throw it out there, think about how many houses were saved, uh, taking those illegal fireworks off the street, um, and how many, um, households were saved. Um, the last part is, I want to talk about what OCFA is doing for the operational plan on July Fourth. In Garden Grove specifically, we have seven fire stations that will be fully staffed. Uh, within Orange County Fire Authority, we have upstaffed all of our reserve engines and all of our reserve, uh, stations with patrols as well. Um, on July Fourth, we'll have two water dropping helicopters with a third on call-back. We'll have a twenty-person hand crew with a possibility of a call-back for another twenty-person hand crew. All of our arson investigators and inspectors will be on duty, uh, mainly at the sites of, um, uh, fire, uh, firework displays. Um, I am on duty on July Fourth, and I've also instructed all of my engine and truck companies to be active patrolling. Uh, not that we want to catch anybody with illegal fireworks, but we want to start, um, making a presence known, engaging in the community, and educating them. Um, so we want to start, um, interacting with them, and, um, again, not to get them in trouble, but to identify any potential hazards. The last thing I want to say is, um, I think the campaign and our partnership with the city, as well as the Police Department, has been successful. Last year, um, due to the education that we did, due to the safe practices, and due to, due to the overwhelming response of the Fire Department, which includes up to seven pieces of apparatus on any house fire, uh, we were able to, uh, limit any, uh, damage or destroyed homes. So, last year, there was zero damage or destroyed homes due to the fire, uh, fireworks, and, uh, the most expensive one was an exterior fire that we were able to, uh, put out within minutes, and I think that's part of the partnership, the quick notification, and, uh, with law enforcement. Uh, so thank you very much, and, um, if we have any questions, if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. With that, we will move on to oral communications. I do have a handful of cards, um, starting with Leland Sisk.
Mr. Mayor and council members and our dedicated city staff, I'm Leland Sisk, not Nicholas I'd like to address the traffic signal coordination that's going to be going on. So, in the letter from Mr. Vu to Mrs. Yang, uh, let's go to page five of that letter dated uh, June thirtieth, and it, uh, talks, it addresses the cameras, it talks about their physical characteristics. So, I do have some questions. Are these cameras recorded? Now, keep in mind, I don't expect an answer here, but I would like to know if this information is available anywhere. So, are these cameras recorded? Do these cameras have license plate IDs so that we can tell if those vehicles are stolen or otherwise didn't used in any illegal activity? Uh, do police and law enforcement agencies have access to these, uh, cameras and/or tapes if they are recorded? And can they have, do they have access to these without a warrant? Can they just tap into them or see them anytime they want? Are citizens able to view these cameras? And if they are recorded, can citizens get copies of the tapes? And what's the process for doing that? Do the cameras emit any radio waves that will affect, uh, satellite radios or cell signals, pacemakers, anything of that nature? That might be nice to know. Jump to section four, part two, page thirteen, Maintenance and Operation Costs seems unrealistic, where it shows seventy-five thousand dollars per year for the next three years of maintenance. I don't believe that's possible. Um, and I'm just curious if there is a built-in mechanism that would automatically roll that over to a realistic amount each year when it comes due. Jump to page fourteen, um, it's got a table that shows the extended costs, and once again, those just seem unrealistically low. We got thirty-eight cameras, come on, I mean, it's, can't stay the same for three years. If it does, I don't want to buy stock in that company. Um, and it says, um, my last question, the slight synchronization, does it require that accessory streets on the side streets, like Ninth Street where I live, do the speed limits on those streets have to be adjusted to speed up the traffic or slow down the traffic to make this coordination work like it's supposed to work? And that's all I have. Hope everyone has a happy Fourth. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Kyle Mason.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. O'Neil, Kyle Mason. You guys have seen me before, it's been a little while. I came here basically to thank everybody. They finally fixed the wall behind the apartments. The traffic and the drug dealing, eighty, ninety percent has stopped. But we still have some issues. The animal hospital has been reopened, and whoever's running it is not running it properly. There's a lot of trash being dumped by the dumpsters in their parking lots, a mess. I've tried to talk to the employees, but talking to the employees is basically like talking to the wall, I'd never get a response back. And they don't want to respond to me because I am the one who closed them down before, and everybody's afraid. But there's really no reason to be afraid if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, and apparently they're not. And I wish somebody would get in there and check it out and find out and shut them down until they do the things they're supposed to do. Number one issue is parking. They got that huge parking lot across the street, and they got all these signs, no parking, and they were supposed to remove them before they opened, and they never did, or replace them, never done so. So, I would like to get those signs removed, please. And the graffiti in the neighborhood, well, it's come and go, but overall, everything's muddled down a lot. But the main thing was the wall. Thank you, people, very much for fixing that wall. Basically, that's it. Thank you. Have a good.
Anna Parker.
Thank you for your time. We're still having issue with the neighbor that for sixty years, we're trying to use the area, the easement, and like, look, this tree was a fake tree that was built in nineteen-fifty-five before the city incorporated there, that was for some privacy. This was in, in between the properties, and there was an apple tree that was in our property. He went there and he just removed the trees because he said the city told them to, because we need to put a wall here. But from the beginning, they were served with C's and the C's letters before construction, so they totally knew that there was no room for a wall. I was there the day the city went there to stop construction, saying that there was no room for a wall to stop. They came to the city, they promised to build a wall, and they kept the construction going. And now, after the construction is ready, there is no room for a wall. Look, this was some privacy that we had from our room. Now they put lights on, I see their heads walking, I had to install a ten-foot tarp because they removed to move a light out of our eyes. When I text them, they said, get better curtains, that's the answer they have. Look, this was our apple tree, they just took it out of our property. And then, still, there are people walking here. We were left with a three-foot easement, and there are still people walk, walking there. They could go on the other side, there are no tru- there are, there's not a house there. They can go all the way to the other side, they will see no windows, they will bother no tenants, they have to walk through eight windows to get here. Why are they still walking here? So, can you guys please at least keep, tell them, hey, until you solve the problem, just use the other way, because they can. And not only that, they dug a hole after court told them, you're not allowed to have a wall there. They hid it from the city, they came to the city and they asked for a permit. The city gave them a permit. After I told the city that I went to court and they said, no. And they used the argument, oh, but the city allowed, so I had to go to the judge and say, hey, even after you gave the order not to build the wall, they went to the city and they still dug the hole there. They closed the hole and now they, they put cement. But the judge said, hey, just even it out. Well, of course, I was moving, I fell there, and it was on my property, and blah, blah, blah. Now the guy said, oh, you cannot go there because they're not the house owner, a motion. So, you know, can you ask at least for them, hey, look at this, this isn't considered to the neighbor, this is dangerous, just fill up the hole, get rid of the cement, and you guys make it even and just go the other way, you know, until this is settled. Thank you very much for your time.
Kelly Bruno Nelson.
I feel like I'm making a, like, regular, like, currents here at your all's meeting. So, um, I just, Kelly Bruno Nelson, CalOptima Health. At first, I just want to say how amazing it is to be here and to see just the love of your community. It really is heartwarming. Um, we are so grateful at CalOptima Health for the partnership that we have with you in the Street Medicine Program, and we look forward to coming back and telling you about all of the things with the Street Medicine Program and the Support Center that'll be happening in September, Phase Two, sharing that with you. But, uh, Mayor Jones, you've been giving out lots of presents and accolades all night, so we are very excited to give one to you. So, we brought you a present, and really want to acknowledge the partnership that we have with you, with the Street Medicine Program, and just thank you so much for your partnership. So, a present for you.
Very cool. I'll, I'll come up, but I'll just say, we appreciate you guys being here and all the good work you're doing in town. We're really glad that we're working together and we're looking forward to a bright future and solving some regional problems and city problems together.
Thank you very much. This type of partnership doesn't exist, so we are very rightful. I'm, I'm not excited to be in the picture, but with you, I'll be in the picture.
All right. Van Gordon.
Good evening. My name is Van Gordon. Uh, some of you know me as the active board member of Garden Grove Chamber. Thank you so much for your support for the, uh, business community here in Garden Grove. Um, in fact, I just got back from, uh, visiting a future member of the, um, Chamber, and they're right there on Garden Grove Boulevard. So, um, my first concern was the, um, safety. Uh, in, the, the reason I, I say that is because my, uh, next-door neighbor right on McNolia and Westminster just, uh, just got broken in, and, you know, it's, it's so, so sad. Um, so, uh, when I visit any customers or any future business right here in Garden Grove, I always re- remind them of, uh, safety, um, measures that they should do, you know, whether it's camera or anything. So, I'm just, um, uh, uh, wanted to bring that up to your, uh, attention. I, I, I'm sure you didn't know about that, but it doesn't hurt to hear from the business, uh, you know, from side. Um, now I'm going to change my hat. Uh, I'm going to talk about the home ownership event that's going to be hosted by VNAP. So, I'm currently on, on the board for VNAP, which is the Vietnamese National Association of Real, uh, Real Estate Professionals. So, we started in Silicon Valley, and, um, we, uh, just, um, have the installation for Southern California right here in Orange County last May, and we hosted our very first home ownership event, guess what, right here in Garden Grove, last year. So, it's really, really near and dear to my heart, and the second annual home ownership event's going to be at El Saugado Community in Santa Ana. So, I would like to invite everyone here, um, um, Mayor Steve Jones, uh, um, City Manager Lisa Kim, and all the council members, please come join us and all the staff. Um, we would be honored to have you there. So, VNAP is created with a mission to close the gap and for the, uh, sustainability of home ownership. So, we really proud to host the annual, um, actually, second annual home ownership. Uh, please come join us, and please help to, uh, spread the words to your residents and, um, ask them to, to join VNAP. Thank you so much for your support. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's going to be July fifteenth, Saturday, from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. Thank you.
Thanks, Van. Maureen Blackman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Uh, I came to thank, uh, Community Services and John Montanches's team for introducing the Pickleball Program in the city of Garden Grove. The city contracted with Performance Pickleball LLC to teach the instruct- instructional program, not just playing. Maria's really good, she's been with us from the beginning. Um, the program is built on skill levels, it began with beginning, intermediate, and advanced. We just completed the intermediate. Uh, there's four classes, and they're two hours each. Um, we have enrolled in the advanced, so we'll see how that goes. That begins week after next. Um, the instruction is really professional, knowledgeable, considerate, and fun. We've learned a lot. I'm hopeful the program begins with the beginning in the fall, so if it is, please go and check the city's Parks and Recs Guide, sign up, they have both youth and adult. We'd love to build this program in Garden Grove, so keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that's all the cards I have. Anyone else wishing to address the council on anything not listed on the agenda?
I do, I turned it up to public streets.
Oh. I didn't get it. Please come forward.
Hi, um, my name is Nicole Hymes, and, um, first thing, I guess, just a little concern. So, for, when they have the concerts at the Garden App on Main and Stanford, so part of the problem is they actually park along the corner going on to, um, Stanford, and so they're blocking that entire lane, and they're doing that every single weekend. So, if I want to cut over to Brookhurst, you know, just go straight down, it's really hard because there's incoming traffic, I have to kind of partially go on the opposite side of the road. So, I don't know if someone could go over there on the weekend, cause, or maybe you just paint it red, because you shouldn't be parking and blocking part of the lane. And then just switching kind of over to say something kind of positive, I really like, you know, the meet on, on Main's, and we had the meet on Mead, and, you know, I learned, I learned so much, and one of the things I kind of learned, I didn't realize all the backend work that went into graffiti removal. It's just kind of like, you see it everywhere, and it seems to be getting worse, but then it was like, apparently there's this partnership with GGPD, and then Public Works, and they will, you know, tag it orange. So, I think it'd be really kind of neat if we had another, maybe, partnership or community meeting that kind of goes over the whole process with graffiti removal, because it's, um, I take notes, and it was way too quickly for my speed to be able to write. And, um, because it seems like if it's on city property, it kind of gets outsourced, but if I have a house and somebody decides to draw all over my fence, I have to pay for that, and I think maybe that might be a reason why. Like, if you look over on Euclid as it's going towards Main, they have that really big old property, and it's constantly being scribbled over. So, I don't know, maybe if we could figure something out where if you do have a private property, maybe we could help somehow pay for all the destruction that's going on. And, um, I just wanted to finish with, I'm really looking forward to that hotel revamp for the homeless, I think that's really great, we really need that, and it's perfect for, um, people who think, so the first one was, I told it's just for men, and I was like, well, it doesn't really help a lot of people, but this one really opens it up to, um, everybody else, which is really great, and it helps clean everything up. So, and that's all I have for today. Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will close oral communications, go to written communications. We just have one, which is item three A, and it's consideration of a written request for a one-day use of Willowitt Golf Course for the annual golf classic on a date to be determined in September twenty-twenty-three.
Assistant Director John Montanches is here to provide the report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm here to transmit a letter from Efren Davaloz, President of the Garden Grove Community Foundation, and Jonathan Glant, Board Chair of Foundation, and Jonathan Glant, Board Chair of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, requesting approval for a one-day use of the Willowitt Golf Course for the annual fundraising golf tournament on date to be determined in September and now, or October. The date is still really to be determined as of right now, of 2023. For the past 17 years, the Garden Grove Community Foundation, GGCF, and the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, also known as the Chamber, have partnered to host the GGCF Chamber Golf Classic. This event is the largest, most significant fundraiser for both organizations and helps support GGCF events, including the Summer Concert Series, Winter in the Grove, and various community groups, as well as assisting the Chamber in promoting Garden Grove businesses, business community, and providing resources for tourists who visit Garden Grove. As a side note, this year's golf tournament will be renamed to the Rick Lerma Memorial Golf Classic to honor the avid supporter of the golf tournament and longtime GGCF board member. Willowitt is owned by the city and the City Council has traditionally granted joint use of the golf course to the GGCF and Chamber for the annual golf classic fundraiser. This request was originally for September 20th, 2023, however, there is a scheduling conflict and the date will be determined again September or October. The nonprofit rate for an all-day tournament with 144 players is $4,320. The GGCF and the Chamber are requesting this fee to be waived. It is recommended that the City Council consider the attached letter requesting the one-day use of the Willowitt Golf Course for the GGCF Chamber Golf Classic on the date to be determined again in September or October of 2023. That concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I have a comment. Oh, good.
No, I was just going to say, obviously, I think it's really special and meaningful. Rick Lerma had years and years of work and dedication put into this tournament. And I don't know for my council colleagues if you've attended in the past, but as a board member for the community foundation, I've been able to be there and volunteer, not much of a golfer. But it is, it's an incredible day. It is so much fun and such a worthwhile event. So with that, I would, I'd be honored to make the motion.
I'll make the second, but just a quick comment. Yeah, the community foundation does such wonderful things for our community. You know, the things you mentioned and actually a lot of things you didn't mention. So, you know, really supportive of this. You know, those concerts in the park are, you know, well received throughout the city for, you know, the community and, you know, that kind of stuff takes money to do and plan and put on and you got to pay the bands and you got to get insurance and all the stuff that people don't think, you know, they don't think what actually goes into making that thing happen. So yeah, very, very full support of this item and I hope you make a lot of money.
All right. We have a motion, a second, call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. So now we will recess to successor agency and then followed by sanitary district after All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll for successor?
Member Bredegham?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Clumfenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. All right, we already did oral communications, consent items, just receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to sanitary district.
All right, thank you very much. I'll open up the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board Directors Meeting. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Member Bredegham?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Clumfenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Yeah.
And President O'Neill?
Thank you. We've already done oral communications simultaneously with council. We just have consent and receive and file the minutes. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion, second. Call the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from board members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn to the next regular meeting Tuesday, July 25th. Back to council. All right, we'll reconvene City Council. That takes us to consent items. We already did 4A out of order. So it's recommended that items 4B through 4M be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
I do not move, I withdraw anything, but I just want to make a note. Can I make a comment?
Do you have us on a specific item?
Yes.
On the consent calendar?
Yes.
Do you want to pull that item then to make a comment? That's.
Sorry, I don't know. I just want to make a comment, but I would say, but I guess I, we could just approve it and I could make the comment at the end.
It's okay. It's not a big deal, but just pull whichever item it pertains to and we'll move on the rest and then you can make your comment when we go.
So the one that I, we're going to pull is the local traffic signal.
4E?
Yes.
Okay. So.
To make a comment.
That's right. We have, we have motion and a second excluding 4E and call to vote.
So this is for the balance?
It's for the balance except for 4E.
Okay. We could just approve and then I will do the make a comment at the end when we go around the room. I don't know.
All right, we'll move the balance.
This is the proper way to do it.
Okay.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, 4E, all yours.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I just didn't know the way it works. So earlier we heard one of the residents talking about the cost and when I review this item, look at the, the cost for the first year in term of installation of the equipment, 1.5, 1.6 new. But after that, there's $60,000 every year after for the equipment. And so when you get something new, you would assume that the equipment would be guaranteed by the manufacturer. There were all the costs related to the maintenance and staff time, et cetera. But my concern was that why is it cost another $60,000 every year after when you have the equipment that new? And so after I talked to Maria and Lisa, we know that this is just for compliance and then the additional detail would be followed after. So I just want to bring that up because when I look at, I think, we don't want to pay something that we don't have to. And so that was it. I just want to make sure that I bring it up. And I want to say thanks to Maria and Lisa because I brought it up and I want additional detail at 3:30, right after I work, and they provide me the detail at 3:55. So that tells you that our staff actually know what they're doing and they know all the detail. When you ask something, they have the information right there. And I was impressed with that. So I just want to say thanks to Maria and Lisa for providing that input. That was it. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second. Or go ahead, call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to public hearings. We have two listed, so we'll start with 5A.
Item 5A is adoption of resolutions confirming the annual levy of fiscal year 2023-2024 assessments for the Garden Grove Street Lighting District, the Garden Grove Street Lighting District Number 99-1, and the Garden Grove Park Maintenance District. And Ms. Anna Neal is here to provide the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Vazquez, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, the City Council is asked to hold public hearings for the city's street lighting and park maintenance districts and to adopt resolutions for the collection of assessments for those districts. The public hearings are required by law and their purpose is to hear testimony on the matter of annual assessments. Once the hearings are complete, the resolutions may be adopted. Should the resolutions pass, the required information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. The assessments will raise approximately $1.3 million in streetlight revenue and $700,000 in park maintenance revenues. There are no increases in the assessment rates from last fiscal year. This concludes my report and I'm available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions? We will open the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on public hearing item 5A? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Liz is looking at me wondering if I'm going to forget the thing. Go ahead and do your thing.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, at this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM today, Tuesday, June 27, 2023, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protest. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 35,151 parcels in the Garden Grove Street Lighting District. As a result, there has not been a submitted of a majority protest. At this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, Tuesday, June 27, 2023, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protest. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 343 parcels in District 99-1. As a result, there has not been a submitted of a majority protest. And lastly, as of 5:30 PM today, June 27, 2023, the city clerk's office received zero protest. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received and there are 35,720 parcels in the city's park maintenance district. As a result, there has not been a submitted of a majority protest. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, comments or a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. We'll move on to 5B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see. Oh, yes. For the record, we have six yes votes and one no vote with Councilmember Bredegham voting no.
All righty, 5B.
5B is adoption of a resolution to confirm the annual levy of fiscal year 2023-24 assessment for the Downtown Assessment District. And Ms. Neal is here to provide that report.
Thanks again, Mrs. Vazquez. Tonight, we have the final step in establishing the annual assessment for the Downtown Assessment District for fiscal year 23-24. The assessment remains the same from the previous year. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the remaining action for City Council is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the assessments for the district. Should the resolution pass, all information will be forwarded to the county for collection of the assessments. This concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Anna. Colleagues, any questions? All righty, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on 5B? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Liz, go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. At this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 today, Tuesday, June 27, the city clerk's office received zero protest. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 28 parcels in the Downtown Assessment District. As a result, there has not been a submitted of a majority protest. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes. Okay, for the record, again, this is six yes votes with Councilmember Bredegham voting no.
All righty, that concludes public hearings. We'll go to commission committee matters, appointments to the planning commission to fill two vacancies.
Item 6A is appointments to the planning commission to fill two vacancies. This was continued from the June 13, 2023 meeting. And the mayor submits Fernando Cueva and Joe LaRica to fill these vacancies.
And just to clarify, I polled everyone, I asked everyone to give me ranking on the five different candidates in order of preference. I put it all onto a spreadsheet and these two got the highest votes.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Call the vote.
Okay, we have five yes votes with Councilmember Cindy Tran voting no and Councilmember Dovin abstaining.
Mayor Jones, will we be opening up for the Parks and Rec vacancy left by Fernando Cueva?
Yes, I guess we will. Yeah.
And we'll have a traffic commission appointment as well.
I would just like to share with them.
Can you make note of that, Liz, and make sure we?
Parks and Rec and traffic.
Get that on the radar then.
We'll do that.
All right. Items for consideration, we do have a handful of those, so let's get going on them. Item 7A.
Item 7A is adoption of a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement between the city of Garden Grove and the Garden Grove Housing Authority for real property located at 11390 and 11400 Sanford Avenue. And this was a joint action item with the housing authority and the report was provided earlier.
Yeah, the report was already provided with the council seating as housing authorities. So unless you have any questions, you can go ahead and move it.
Move to approve?
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
7B.
Item 7B is authorization to participate with the Organized Retail Theft Prevention Grant Program from the California Board of State and Community Corrections. And Sergeant Holloway is here to provide that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members. You almost don't need that mic. Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager Kim, and Garden Grove City officials. My name is Willie Holloway. I am the detective sergeant assigned to the Property Crimes Investigation Unit here at Garden Grove PD. My reason for being here today is to seek City Council's support and approval to apply for the California Board of State and Community Corrections Organized Retail Theft Prevention Grant. The purpose of this grant is to help local police agencies combat organized retail theft, motor vehicle theft, motor vehicle parts and accessories theft, and so forth by providing additional funding for equipment and directed enforcement operations. As you are aware, property crimes have increased exponentially over the last several years and agencies are relying on new technologies to deter and combat these active crime trends. A major way to combat these current crime trends is through the use of license plate reader cameras. In addition to cameras, directed enforcement operations have proven to be effective and provide an additional police presence to areas identified as high crime areas. In fact, so far, several major Garden Grove Police Department cases have been solved using neighboring agencies license plate reading, specifically Flock camera system. These include homicides, major assaults, burglaries, auto thefts, catalytic converter thefts, and the list just goes on. Additionally, the hotels along Harbor Boulevard have already purchased 12 of these Flock cameras for all entrances to the hotels along Harbor Boulevard. And the Brookside condominium complex located at Chapman and Brookhurst purchased three cameras to cover their community, which shows the desire of the community to be involved and assist the PD with combating this crime as well as a trust in the Flock system. The grant funds we are seeking would be used to purchase 80 Flock license plate reader cameras. These would be stationary cameras mounted permanently and six mobile Flock license plate reader cameras that can be moved or placed on a mobile platform. In addition to cameras, the money would be used to fund direct enforcement, directed enforcement operations throughout the year. We would specifically target high crime areas or areas that have had a recent increase in these type of crimes to conduct those directed enforcement operations. And just to be clear, what a directed enforcement operation is, is a dedicated set of police officers on a specific, a specific assignment at a specific amount of time with the intent of either deterring or in some way reducing or perhaps even catching these crimes committed in the act. The total amount being requested from the grant fund for these items is $1,302,231. Now, in order to apply for the grant, we're seeking City Council approval to designate the Garden Grove Police Department as the lead public agency for the grant application and the grant, and the grant operation if we are awarded. Additionally, to authorize the Garden Grove Police Department to apply for the California Board of State and Community Corrections Organized Retail Theft Prevention Grant Program in the amount of $1,302,231 on behalf of the City Council with the police department again acting as the lead public agency. with the police department again acting as the lead public agency.
I'll move to approve?
I'll second.
I do have a quick comment. I am very happy to see us going down this road for the grant for this retail theft. I know over the last three years, we've lost a lot of retail establishments. You know, Burlington Coal Factory over in Kim's district, we lost Ride Aid over on Valley View. And as they're leaving, they're saying, we can't, we can't make money anymore. The retail theft is just so bad, so they have to close down shop. And, you know, that's a detriment to our community in many ways. Not just tax revenue, but convenience for our community to go shopping and stuff like that. And so I'm really happy we're going down this road to apply for these grants. Hope you're successful in getting them, and I would give the second, but Stephanie already beat me to it.
Counselor Dovin?
I do have a couple of questions, and I'm also enthusiastic, and we'll get behind you to apply for the grant. And if we get it, that's great, and I trust that under your jurisdiction, it'll be well managed, and we'll see some results. But before we take that step, I want to ask if the grant is only for retail or does it help us with burglaries? And there's wholesalers that are getting robbed in our city that I've known about. So will that grant also help wholesalers?
So this grant is specifically for organized retail theft and motor vehicle and motor vehicle parts and accessories theft. So you are correct, we do have some, you know, some trending issues with burglaries and other items, which we are aware of and working on. But this grant specifically will only cover organized retail theft. And our main focus is going to be on the auto theft, auto parts and accessories theft, catalytic converters, things like that that are, that are high value items right now.
Okay, so that answers my first question. My follow-up is, we do have a rise in those kind of crimes. Are we seeing that specifically in Garden Grove? And are we cracking those cases with high rate of success?
We have had, let me back up, and I'll answer your question from the beginning. We're seeing about a seventeen-hundred percent increase in catalytic converter thefts over the last several years. I would say about three years back, seventeen-hundred percent. We are successful in, in a number of these. Unfortunately, there are a lot where we just don't have the means to, to dig real deep into the issue. We've had a lot of success using neighboring agencies' Flock cameras to identify catalytic theft, catalytic converter theft suspects and make arrests. We've been able to utilize this system for our suspects as far away as Riverside County. So, you know, this will undoubtedly help us. This is such a fantastic tool for us, and it's not just limited to our city. We can network with neighboring agencies and share this information, access their systems. As you know, we're located very close to freeways. Oftentimes, people that come into this town to commit crimes will jump on a freeway and be out of town by the time our responding units get there. So likewise, with our setups, we would be able to assist other cities that are experiencing the same trends, which will undoubtedly reduce our crime.
So we're gonna share some resources, and we've, we've had some success with sharing other cities' resources, and this will be just build on that. I know that a lot of criminals roll through our city, and they're not necessarily local, so the cameras help. And I like the mobile, you know, we're gonna designate these eight. And I talked to staff when we had our agenda review that those mobile units are kept mobile so we can focus, and like you said, the directed action. And that, that's great because there, we don't know where they're gonna hit next, right? There's not any real predictability. Lastly, there, we had a resident who raised issues with who has access to that data. Is it on tape? Is it recorded digitally or otherwise? And do we have any privacy issues, or has anybody objected to this program?
No privacy issues that I'm aware of. There are several agencies already using this specific brand of camera, the Flock system. There are different, different ones. We feel this is the best product out there right now. It's a cloud-based storage system. Their videos are kept for different periods of time depending on, you know, whether or not a suspect was arrested, and that, that video would be needed for discovery in court or if it's a crime trend, and, or if, you know, most of the time, these scans are just gonna be held for a certain amount of time and deleted off the system. We will only share this information with other law enforcement agencies. It's not intended to have a live feed or anything like that to it. It's purely for identifying and reducing crime.
Okay. Lastly, if we do get the grant, is it limited to a certain number of years? Or is it renewable, or how long do we get to keep that system?
Yes, this, this grant would be a three-year grant.
Thank you.
One point clarification, and Sergeant Holloway, you had mentioned in your report. I think one thing for us to communicate to the, our residents out there, this isn't targeted at them, it's targeted at the crime. So these cameras are strategically placed for places where you know there's a high crime rate, or the portable ones are gonna be used in the most advantageous way to, you know, have a problem. So if you have a certain amount of catalytic converter thefts in a certain area, maybe you're over there, and the portables are on that unit, you know, traveling in that area. Is that right?
Absolutely. So there was a, we've already mocked up some plans, and there's a lot of thought and purpose that goes into where these cameras will be located.
So we're not randomly, you know, recording our residents that are just doing their daily life type of stuff? This is targeted stuff?
Absolutely not. Identified areas of high crime.
Thank you.
And also, the, the location and where they're recording is only in public, right away, public places.
George?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up question, and I know you'd mentioned this is kind of specific to organized retail theft. But let's say a murder suspect happens to drive past one of those LPR Flock cameras. You would still have access, your detectives would still have access, you know, should a other crime happen to those, right? Like a murder, rape suspect happened to drive by, you'd still be able to access that data, even though it's not specific to retail theft.
Absolutely. We could, we could utilize this system for any crime, you know, any, anything. Honestly, there's, there's nothing too small or too large in regards to a level of criminal act that we couldn't use this to, use as a way to develop a lead.
Perfect. That was kind of the point I was thinking. If you're not committing a crime, don't worry about it. They're not, but we're gonna catch you if you're committing a crime.
And the cameras are programmed to identify vehicles. Again, they're, they're license plate readers. They're not programmed to identify facial recognition or anything to that level.
Alright, I believe we already have a motion in a second, so we'll call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Seven C.
Item seven C is award of contract to John Gilmer Construction for the Magnolia Park Improvement City Project Number S-dash thirteen-eleven. And Mr. Mark Freeman is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, staff would like to request that the city council award a contract for the, for the Magnolia Park Improvement Project to John Gilmer Construction. The Magnolia Park Improvement Project is part of the capital improvement priorities outlined in the two thousand nineteen Parks and Facilities Master Plan. In November two thousand, in November twenty-twenty-two, the city council approved the request to issue a purchase order to the Innovative Playground Company for the purchase of a new playground, for new playground equipment at Magnolia Park through the Sourcewell Competitive Bid Program, contract number zero-one-zero-five-two-one-b U R. Following this authorization approval, staff processed the purchase order for the new playground equipment that will be installed by the selected contractor for the city project. The project received seven bids, and they were opened by the city clerk's office on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at eleven A M. Staff reviewed the bid, bid documents submitted by the lowest qualified contractor, John Gilmer Construction, with a total bid of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. The bid amount is within the current project budget. The licenses and references of the contractor have been reviewed and verified by staff, and all other documentation is in order. The major components of this project includes installation of said playground as well as the rubberized play surfacing, demolition and replacement of the picnic shelter, demolition and replacement of the, of the perimeter pool fencing, and concrete work for the new exercise equipment as well as ADA compliant paths of travel. Should this request be approved, the contract schedule will start next month with the anticipated completion of late fall twenty twenty-three. The completion of this, the completion of this project will have no financial impact to the city's general fund. The improvement, the improvement for, for, excuse me, this improvement for a total amount of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars will be split funded. The amount, the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents will be funded by the Prop sixty-eight per capita grant, and the remaining amount of four hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents is included in the community services' five-year capital improvement budget and is funded by citywide park fees and park fee funds. To conclude, staff would like to recommend that the city council award a contract for city project number S-dash one-three-one-one for Magnolia Park Improvements to John Gilmer Construction in the amount of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and make minor modifications as appropriate. This concludes my report, and I am available to answer any questions the city council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Colleagues, Joe?
I got a briefing in the agenda review, and I said I would reserve questions for staff or the presenter tonight. And I do have a couple of questions. One is, does this budget include signage? Because there's, if we're not gonna allow for skating, for example, and would say it's skating prohibited or others kind of signage. The second thing is, if there's any landscaping that requires planting of trees or bushes or otherwise sprinkler systems and so on for this improvement. So at least those two items I'd like to see in the budget.
So for the, the signs, there is signage that comes with the, the playground equipment that, that states what the playground use is intended for, and that is included in the budget. And then as far as shrubbery and irrigation and landscaping, that all is included, and it was part of the, the bid package. They had to include that in their, in their bid specifications. So yes, it is included. Thank you.
Questions, I just excited about this project, Magnolia Park and District Two, so I'm happy to move it.
But I expect you to be on one of those swings.
This rendering is adorable. I don't have any real cerebral or questions or comments other than it's really cute. It's gonna be a great addition to the park. I love it. It's very colorful.
Call the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Seven D.
Item seven D is approval of a cooperative agreement with the City of Santa Ana for the Westminster Avenue Rehabilitation Project from New Hope Street to Harbor Boulevard. And Mr. Bill Murray is here to provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to approve a, actually, cooperative agreement with the City of Santa Ana to facilitate the rehabilitation of Westminster Avenue from New Hope to Harbor. This agreement will reimburse Santa Ana for work that they will be doing in the City of Garden Grove. In general, the rehab, rehab work will include, but is not limited to cold milling, existing pavement replacing with A C overlays, slurry sealing, restoration of traffic signing and striping, pavement markers, and restoring the centerline ties and monuments. All of this work is to be completed at an estimated cost of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Staff reviewed Santa Ana plans and specs and verified Garden Grove's portion of the work. This work will be completed on Santa Ana's schedule and should begin, but it should begin next month. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with gas tax. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
I would like to, I would like to move the items since it is in my district, and I do have a question slash comment. Will we have Garden Grove public work staff kind of monitoring and overseeing this project? I have quite a few complaints about Santa Ana construction and fixing their streets, and I know it's completely different than the more efficient job that your side of town does. So I just wanna make sure it's being watched with a very close eye.
We'll make sure that we watch it specifically at your direction.
Thank you.
Was there, was there a second there?
And also, Bill, before we vote, is there anything then underground or anything related to electricity or electricals or sewers, or is this topical?
It's pretty much topical. Anything underground is basically, you know, sewer manholes, things like that, that will raise the manholes, water valve, the cans and the covers there, they have to raise that. That's about it.
Thank you.
Alright, motion, a second, call the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Seven E.
Item seven E is award of contract to W J or W G J Enterprises, Inc., doing business as P C I for the construction of the Bicycle Corridor Improvement Project. Includes improved bicycle signing and striping upgrades citywide. And Ms. Elena Chang is here to provide the report.
Thank you, Ms. Vazquez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Item seven E is a consideration to award a contract to W G J Enterprises, D B A P C I, for the construction of the Bicycle Corridor Improvement Project known as the B C I P. This project was originated through the city's Reimagine Initiative together with the Medal of Honor Trail to improve active transportation and implementing the goals identified by the community in the Garden Grove Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. In two thousand eighteen, the C E D Department was awarded one million dollars in Caltrans grant funds to improve bike infrastructure citywide. The B C I P includes creating new bike lanes by road rebalancing, thermoplastic striping buffers, installing video detection camera systems, bike loops, and adding wayfinding signage, adding a total of fifteen miles of improvements along five major corridors. The corridors include Chapman Avenue, West Street, Gilbert Street, Brookhurst Street, and Lamson Avenue. Due to the size of the project, a significant component is public outreach along with, along all major corridors. This includes creating information website, email, community hotline, and social media support. Staff solicited construction bids, and the lowest responsible bidder was P C I at one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. The licenses and references have been verified, and all documents are in order. Construction is anticipated to begin July seventeenth and estimated completion in September two thousand twenty-three. Improvements are included in the fiscal year twenty-three capital improvement plan and funded by a combination of general fund, Caltrans grant funds, and A Q M D funds. Funds are approved in the fiscal year twenty-three operational budget. It is recommended that city council award the contract to W G J Enterprises, D B A P C I in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents for the B C I P project, and authorize the city manager or her designees to execute the agreement and make minor modifications as appropriate. Staff and our contractors from A I X Engineering and P C I are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chang. Colleagues, any questions, comments?
I have two questions and two comments, but I'll wait for George.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, you know, it's always great when you can improve things and use grant funding, you know, it, you know, it's nice. Couple of concerns that come up quite a bit, especially when you're talking about bike projects and whatnot. I just want to verify that we are not doing any road diets associated with this. We aren't gonna close any lanes of traffic as a result of this. And I guess that's my main concern. Other cities will tend to, you know, oh, we'll just take one main lane of traffic off of Beach Boulevard, for example, or Harbor Boulevard, right? Now everybody else that's driving is having worse problems to make a lane for a bike lane that ten people a year use. So, yeah, I want to make sure that that isn't going to happen in this case.
As far as road diets, not really road diets, more improvements to the road, road balancing, and the main part of the scope is re-striping and thermoplastic striping. So, and installing the video detection cameras.
So there won't be any lane reductions and all? Like if there was two lanes, now there's only gonna be one because we're gonna make a bike lane out of one, that kind of thing.
Good evening, Arturo Vivar with A I X, Virginia Record for the project. So I have a little bit more technical background, like to- So I have a little more technical background, like to be able to answer that question. So for the majority of the 15 miles of improvements, bicycle improvements, we call it rebalancing, as Elena mentioned. But there is an area on West Street where there's a portion of West Street right now that is coming from Anaheim as you go southbound. That portion of West Street is actually one lane in each direction, and it switches to two lanes as it approaches Garden Grove, city of Garden Grove limits. And so the proposal is actually to just keep it at one lane as it is flowing southbound within the neighboring city of Anaheim and repurposing that extra space for a bike lane. So there is one portion along West Street where that does happen. The proper planning documents and traffic studies done by the city have confirmed that the traffic volumes in this area do not warrant two lanes of traffic at peak times, only one lane, apparent by the existing condition north of the segment that we're reducing down. The rest of the corridor, this doesn't happen, obviously, in every single location. This is the one spot that it does happen. And then south of this location where we are narrowing down from four lanes of traffic to two, it goes back to four lanes. So you know, it's an occasion where we're not really taking a whole corridor and really reducing it down, not assuming traffic volumes. I think there is the proper studies that were done and making sure that we are not negatively impacting traffic that way.
And again, I'm good with bike lanes, you know, as long as they're not infringing on the traffic. Stuff like this, I'm assuming there was a count, a point in time count of how many bikes actually used it during a period of time. West is a very busy street, for lack of a better term. And reducing a lane could be very problematic for a lot of our community to, you know, to maybe help 10 people a month who might use it on a bike. I don't know that that's wise and a good spending of grant money. So for that reason, I'm not going to be in support of this project. I don't think any lane should be reduced in any way. I'm fine with painting the lanes. I'm fine with making bike lanes. I think that's awesome. I'm supportive of people getting out and biking. You know, but honestly, our community is not a huge bike community. Even the kids aren't riding bikes anymore very often. You don't see a whole lot of them. I mean, sure, there's a few here and there, but not enough to justify this kind of grant funding spending if we're going to close lanes down. You know, so for that reason, even if it's just one lane, I'm going to have to vote against it.
I'm optimistic, but I'm also cautious, like George, because yeah, we might get some backlash if we close any parts of any lane for any distance. But I want to know, first, the contractor that we're voting to award, how many actually put in for this project?
For the bids, there is two bids.
Okay, and WJG, PCI, have they done similar projects in other cities with bike lanes?
Yes, they have.
So they've had some experience?
Yes.
Now, what's the total length of the trail that we're talking about? What's the distance? Is it a mile, half a mile?
For each street?
Yeah, in total, yeah.
A total of 15 miles.
15 miles, and this stretch at West, how, I mean, we said that we're going to narrow down the lanes. How, what's the distance of that?
It's three miles in West.
That's quite a distance.
The corridor at West Street is three miles, but it's not the entire stretch that is getting narrowed down. A portion of West Street is already two lanes. And like I mentioned, north of the city limits in Anaheim, it's also two lanes. And so really, there's a gap in between that kind of opens up. This is also an area, I would note, that has four lanes of traffic but no median in a lot of residents. And as you all know, that's one of the goals of a safety project like this is to also look at the accident data, figure out ways of mitigating some of those traffic accidents. And so I'm sure we've all been in some of those situations where, you know, there's no median. And so when you want to turn left into your driveway, you have to stop mid-lane. And what this project is also doing is in replacing, not only reusing those two lanes to also add a striped median, so that people can actually pull into that median and make a left safely outside of, through traffic. So that's something that I should have mentioned.
Let me follow up just a little bit more, and then let the rest of the council away. If we vote down this proposition, do we lose the granting, Elaine?
Yes.
Okay, so it's either or. Awarded or we lose the grant. Number two, is there any amount of tweaking that we can do? I know it's already designed, been through traffic and engineering and all that, but to minimize the impact as far as the narrowing or dieting of the lanes. I know there's a safety feature built in, and I like that. That kind of offsets the negative impact because we are making it safer and for pedestrians and so on with the divider and so on. But I'd feel more comfortable voting it up if we can tweak it to, so that, I mean, three miles is a long, quite a long distance. Can we limit that or tweak it to within a mile?
The grant was originally, we applied for the grant and submitted the scope of work and including the time count and all the collision data was all included in the application, and that's when we received the award. So because it's a federal grant and it's awarded by Caltrans, it's very difficult to change the scope of work. So right now, we're at the fourth phase, which is like probably the fifth year.
Yeah, so the answer is no, we can't tweak it anymore. So last thing, I know this is part of Reimagine Initiative, and it says here some signage, you know, bicycle signing. But I want signs to recognize that this is part of the Reimagine Initiative. If we have like a Reimagine Garden Grove, two, three signs along that 15 miles, I would like that because it's recognition that this is an improvement to our cities and streets. So I want that noted. If they don't, if this contract, which I will vote up, doesn't pay for it, then maybe the city will consider putting out some money to add those signage to recognize that 15 miles that we're improving the city streets.
Let me go with two quick points. One was, keep going on what George brought up. I'm concerned about the closure on West. Can you be specific on where we lose the lane? Was it from Catella to Orangewood or all the way to Chapman? Where are we losing a lane on West Street?
I think it's Orangewood to Chapman because Catella leads into Anaheim, and I think it's already two lanes. As a professional driver there to Disneyland, it's my shortcut. I can tell you, there's not a lot of traffic there.
I just want to be, I want to know specifically what lane is going away and how long. Like you're saying it's from Orangewood to Chapman. I don't know. I don't see it on the map. I just, I'm asking.
Yes, I was right. You just confirmed.
Yeah, it's only a portion of the West corridor. It's not the entire.
No, I understand, but I want to know exactly where we're losing a lane on West.
I think there's a map on the project, street map. It's crude, but it's the very last attachment.
I have the street map. I'm looking at my satellite version of the street right now. I can see four lanes going from Anaheim through Garden Grove. I want to know what lane are we going to lose?
So it is the section between Anaheim, I mean, between Catella, which is the northern limits of the city, and just north of Chapman. Yeah, so that small segment.
Yeah, no, I understand. So, but can it go north and south?
Correct.
And with the addition of a center median, that will help the cross-traffic.
I get it, and I'll let you.
I think it's dangerous that we're trying to interfere with engineering over a five-year project.
But to some of the speaker's points and George's point, when was the last time you saw a bicycle? And what I see is, I know it's safe. You're slowing traffic. It's good for, you know, residents or maybe owners that, you know, lived on that street. But what I see is rush hour traffic in the morning and the afternoons, it gets pretty busy. But anyway, I'm going to move on from that one. One last thing for me, District 2, from Orangewood to Catella on Brookhurst. That looks like you're going all the way to Chapman, Chapman to Catella, both north and southbound. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and am I losing any lanes there?
No.
Okay, are we losing any parking there? Which I'm not opposed to because I get a lot of for sale cars that come over from the city of Anaheim, like the park there. So I'm okay with losing some street parking because there is no houses there. It's like, hey, you want to sell your car, bring it from Anaheim, and you can park it over here. So if we could do no parking there and add the bike lane there, I'm fully supportive of that. So just keep that in mind.
No parking loss.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. When or how long ago did this come before the planning commission? I mean, the traffic commission?
Traffic commission.
Didn't? Okay. I know that the conversation about West has been ongoing for quite some time, whether we call it a road diet, a rebalancing, a change in the street, I don't know. But I do know that in speaking with traffic commissioners that are aware of this project, that have spoken to our traffic engineers and so forth, I've walked West Street many times, talking to residents about parking issues, about trying to back in and out of their driveway due to speeding and so forth. They actually welcomed this because of that exact reasoning. So I understand that this is maybe a bit avant-garde. This is definitely something different. But I think in some ways, not only does this benefit maybe the biking aspect of this, but it could also help the residents that have a really hard time navigating West Street, living there on that street, dealing with the traffic and so forth, to maybe get in and out of their driveways more safely. So from that perspective, if we look at it from that, I think, angle, I think there is a sector of those residents and neighbors that will welcome this. And so that's just an input from my perspective on that.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So for District 3 on Brookhurst from Garden Grove to Tras, what do you do there? I know that street always busy. A lot of time during rush hour, you just like have street packed with car. So I want to know, what are you doing in that area? You add another lane, you just?
Keeping the same number of traffic lanes and improving the existing bicycle or adding a bicycle lane where there's a gap. So no loss of traffic lanes or parking.
Okay, so the only one that you address, which is on West, that's it? Thank you.
Correct.
One last comment. Yeah, I see a need to, when a grant comes in, it's kind of nice to be able to, you know, most elected officials and staffers look at grants, oh, it's free money, right? Well, no, it's not free money. It's taxpayers' money that taxpayers paid. Yeah, it went to a different source, and it's funneling back to us, but it's still taxpayers' money. And we need to be the proper custodians of that money when we're going to use it. When you're looking at a, you know, $1.2 million grant or whatever, you know, these kind of issues need to be brought up. You know, LA went into this kind of idea of road diets, and they just had a total revolt by their community. I mean, to the point where two council members got thrown out of office because of it. And when you see these kind of decisions being made, and probably not a whole lot of input was got from the council prior to this being submitted, you know, it's concerning. But with that being said, I don't think, everything else on this grant would be fine. But when we start closing lanes, I'm sorry, I get a little nervous because I've seen what other cities have done, and it's never, never gone good. I've never seen one instance of a lane, road closure, or road diet, or whatever you want to call it, and it's never good for the officials that make the decision to do that. It just has never gone right. So anyway, with that being said, I think it's, when that kind of money is being said, yes, it's a grant, and we're very supportive of grants for things. But you got to make sure that that grant is covering things that are needed. Otherwise, it's just a waste of taxpayer money, plain and simple. You know, we all work our butts off, and we all see what comes out of our checks. And, you know, just to spend it because we have it, oh, we're going to lose it? That's bad. That's bad thinking. That's bad thinking. So that's the end of my.
I have a couple of comments. I just had one question, pending question. In the area of West going north to Anaheim, do they have bike lanes?
The area north of this segment?
Yes.
Yes.
So it'd be continuing on from Anaheim to have a?
Correct. This is closing a gap in the bicycle network.
So that's one thing I wanted to highlight, because I do remember on my many travels to Disneyland from that street that there are bike lanes in Anaheim and then not in Garden Grove. The other thing I want to make comment is, like, I'm not a bicyclist. Don't ask me for bike lanes. It's not my thing. I'm not going to use it. But there are plenty of people in Garden Grove who do. And the reason why we don't see more of them is because they're not safe places for them to bike continuously from one place to the other in Garden Grove or to other cities. The biggest complaint that I've gotten from folks in District 6 at least that have reached out to me when we've done our Parks Master Plan and our safety plans and other things is that there's not protected safe bike lanes for them. And again, not my jam. You're not going to see me on a bike, riding anywhere. I'll drive myself if I need to or take the bus if that's my last option, or call an Uber. But that's not to say that it's not someone else's preference and that they want to, but there isn't allocated spaces for them to do that here in Garden Grove. If you look at the map, I mean, they've said it like 10 times, it's just West that's getting this done. So I don't know why we had asked that 20 times. But if you look at the map, look at what's being highlighted. Where is, so I'm going to bike from one place in District 1 to the other place, and then what, have to like figure out how to walk my bike somewhere else because now I can't bike safely? My biggest pet peeve as a driver is having bicyclists on my road and having to be careful. And now I'm like intervening into another lane where I'm probably going to get into a car accident. But if they had, if we had protected bike lanes from one side of Garden Grove to the other, I mean, if you look at this, this is a step in the right direction. This is five years' work of worth from staff and planning and working to apply for these. More than that, I'm just looking based on the studies dated to 2019, working with staff to get this done, to start increasing and improving bike lanes here in Garden Grove for the, I don't know how many residents that would like to use them. So I think that it's something that we have to be open-minded about. There are plenty of things here that I vote in support on that my residents want, but not necessarily my thing. And so we have to bear that in mind and a lot of work and effort into this. And it's taxpayer dollars that were allocated by our state legislators designated for this use because there was a need and a result of folks wanting this. It wasn't arbitrary. It wasn't random. Folks want more bike lanes. We're being pressured to move to electric vehicles away from gas. We're being asked to focus on how to travel. You know, a lot of companies are using what is carpool benefits for our residents to get to work, riding with fellow coworkers to longer distances. So we're moving away from trying to have everyone have their own car and having multiple families have multiple cars. Same thing with our parking issues in many areas of our district. One apartment, one-bedroom apartments has like three cars. One is only going to have one, so on and so forth. I could go on forever. Again, not my jam, but I'm going to be supportive of this item, and I want to thank staff for all of their hard work, for the studies that went on, for the partnerships to draw down these federal dollars in order to pay for this, so it's not coming out of our general fund. But it's also providing a gap, filling a gap for our community. So thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to, you know, I'm just concerned because we originally, when we were focused on this years ago, you know, and I'm looking specifically now at District 2. Gilbert is a thoroughfare. It's a good place for a bike lane, as you can see, all the way from Anaheim to, right now, Westminster. Now, Brookhurst is a different animal. I'm trying to visualize, you said that we're closing no lanes on Brookhurst. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so the residents I have that live facing, that'd be on the west side of Brookhurst, you know, homes that are facing Brookhurst, you have cars parked there, full road of cars all the way down from Chapman to Catella almost. When you add a bike lane, there's three lanes of traffic there. And then there's a, I'm trying to visualize how the bike lane, is the bike lane going to be right outside those parked cars?
Correct.
Okay, and there's still room for three lanes?
Correct.
Okay.
Brookhurst is one of the corridors that has the most generous width.
Right.
And so where there, and it actually does already have a Class 2 bike lane, on-street bike lane for the majority of the corridor. We're closing the gap on the gaps that there are with repurposing.
I just wanted to make sure, because I'm voting on this, and I have to answer to the folks that live there and the people that live on Brookhurst. And the people that live on Brookhurst, and if they lost a parking spot or they lost a lane, I'm going to hear about it. So I want to make sure I know what I'm voting on. So that's why I'm taking a little bit longer tonight to ask these questions. Okay? Good, so I'll be in favor of it. Thank you.
Well, I am a bicyclist. I have a whole family bicyclist. And I believe I saw John O'Neill on a bicycle before.
I still have my bike from 1978.
So I know we're bicyclists. We support the development of, you know, kind of a green friendly environment in our city. So I'm all for that, I will vote it up. But I want to know if we need to repurpose it or redesign it some point down the road, how are we locked in on this expenditure? Once we expend it, are we locked in for a few years? Or can we reverse some of it, repurpose it? Or, I mean, if John's getting calls every day and it's not what we discussed tonight, then can we reverse that? And what's our timeline?
Always reverse anything if there's any kind of tragic flaw to it or it's causing.
Okay, I like that. I like the reassurances here because I don't want to be stuck with it for the next 12 years. Yeah, we'll have to reimagine it again.
Yeah, this is, this project is specifically only restriping of the existing pavement. So really not doing any hardscape improvements in terms of adding new curb lines or anything like that. It really is what's already out there right now and really repurposing the pavement that's there.
Okay. So yeah, I'm not too worried, but I want to look ahead a little bit in case, you know, we don't, we just set ourselves up, we can't back out later.
All right, anybody else?
Just wanted to reimagine it the first time and get it right the first time.
Yeah, that's fair. Thank you colleagues for supporting this, this is kind of a big deal to me. I've been involved in it for, it's been at least 10 or 12 years since we started getting into the details of what makes a city desirable. And this was just one element. And it doesn't happen overnight. And it takes a long time to implement a system that actually does become usable. But it's quite evidenced in a lot of major cities around the world that cities that focus on bicycle and pedestrian connectivity and kind of focus on getting people out of cars and caring about the environment and pollution, that kind of stuff, all goes hand in hand with making a city desirable. I could cite a number of cities that are shining examples of that. So this is one tiny step in that direction. Where we have implemented new bike trails, they've been absorbed. They actually get, you know, lots of users every day, not 10 a year or whatever was mentioned. So I'm excited about this. Thank you for everyone who worked on it and thank you colleagues for supporting it. I'd like to make a motion to approve it. Call to vote?
Motion received with five yes, six yes votes with Ms. Councilmember Brighting voting no.
Thank you. 7F.
Item 7F is award of contract to Lead Electric, Inc. for construction of project number CP 1268010, Trask and West Haven Reservoir, BPS SCADA improvements. And Mr. Murray is here to provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight's City Council is being asked to award a contract to LED, L-E-E-D, Electric Incorporated, so Lead Electric, for the construction and installation of supervisory, control, and data acquisition systems at the Trask and West Haven reservoirs. In general, the SCADA work will include, but is not limited to, the installation of the SCADA software, the construction of the hardware equipment to control and operate both those reservoirs. And there's also booster pump stations there and it will control that as well. All this work is to be completed at a cost of almost $1.5 million. Staff received an open two bids on May 17th of this year and staff disqualified our two bid due to improper references and lack of experience as defined and required in the specifications. SS, staff recommends awarding the contract to the second lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in July and should be complete by December. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with water funds. This concludes staff's report and are available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Questions, comments, or a motion?
One question and one comment. Have we contracted with Lead Electric before?
No, we have not. However, we have checked out thoroughly their references and their experience on similar type projects. And that is specifically why we're recommending going with them.
Okay. And we're not expecting any supplementals? They're not going to ask us for an additional?
I always expect supplementals. You should know that in my entire career here with the city, only three supplementals have ever come to City Council by going over our contingency. Two of those were not default of the Public Works Department. And the third one was, we came to a compromise to avoid litigation.
Okay, so we are pretty tough on that.
I take that very, very seriously.
Thank you, sir.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thanks, Bill. Probably back to you. 7G.
Item 7G is award of contract to RJ Noble Company for construction of the arterial streets rehabilitation project 2023, city project number CP 1356000. And Mr. Murray will provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contract to RJ Noble to rehabilitate the following street segments. These are arterial streets. Trask Avenue from Benton to Euclid. Haster Street from Lamson to Chapman. Garden Grove Boulevard from Gilbert to Brookhurst. Springdale Street from Lamson to Chapman. West Street from Lamson to Chapman. Lamson from Euclid to West Street. And Barraro from Harbor to Lamson. In general, the rehab work will include, but is not limited to, removing and reconstructing failed pavement areas, cold milling. We're going to be placing an asphalt rubber aggregate membrane, which is some new technology we got from Caltrans, where it's needed. Regular asphalt paving, replacement of concrete curves and gutters and crosswalks and driveways, sidewalks, then handicap ramps, you know, all that's included. We're going to be also doing catch basin inlet screens. A lot of those aren't seen from the outside. We use different ones that are inside the catch basin so that we don't have that big grate blocking everything like we used to. Various traffic signal work, restoration of traffic signing, striping, pavement markers, all that stuff. And of course, the reestablishment of the survey centerline ties and monuments. All of this work is to be completed at a cost of just under $7 million. Staff received an open two qualified bids on June 14th of this year and staff found RJ Noble to be the lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in July and should be complete by March of next year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and would be paid for with general funds that the council set aside to accelerate our pavement management program. So this is the funds, the additional funds that you folks approved. This concludes staff's report and are available should you have any questions.
Thanks, Bill. Joe?
I did ask staff if we've contracted with RJ Noble before and we have. So I'm pretty confident that they'll deliver. But I don't like the timeline. I want end of year because that's an extra three months that my residents are going to have to put up with construction, barricades, barriers, detours, and so on. So, and I don't know if we have a penalty clause for going over the timeline. If it goes into April or May, that's not tolerable. So I just want to push for a quicker timeline.
I appreciate and respect your comments, council member. However, this is a significant amount of work. The contract time period we built into the contract, and that is what was proposed on by RJ Noble. So for us to now, at this stage, go ahead and shorten that timeline, we'd essentially need to reject all bids and rebid the contract, which is, you haven't voted on it yet, we could do that. However, I will also bring up this. I believe that there's going to be a pretty strong El Nino this winter. I don't expect this contract to be done by this time. If that bears out to be true, that we have another rainy season, if it's even as bad as last year, which was not in El Nino, I believe, and this one's supposed to be worse, I don't think that we're making this date.
Okay, at least we know that in advance, that you're saying we may be delayed beyond March. I want our residents to know that.
Yes, sir.
That it's force majeure, it's acts of God, and we can't write that out of the contract. But any incentive, we can have a move faster or by the deadline would be much appreciated. As I say, I have seen these kind of projects drag on for more than a month or two delay and it does cause hardship for people in that area. So yes, El Nino and so on, but smart planning can also help alleviate some of that.
Well, I was going to say, we've contracted with RJ Noble many times before. They're a very large company and they've actually performed really well. In my experience on the council, and I'm sure the colleagues would agree, they actually move pretty quickly when they can. Just, and I'm not, I have no, you know, no stock in the company, no. But I know that, I've appreciated how when we've issued previous contracts to them, that they've actually finished sometime sooner than I expected. That's all. I just thought I had two cents.
I just have a quick question. And I know you guys have to put a lot of work into identifying which arterial streets get prioritized for. Can you tell us how that's done? Because I know, I'm looking at some of the streets in my area and they're like really in bad shape and they're not on this list. How do we, how is that priority done?
Well, that's an excellent question, council member. We have a computer program that was actually identified by the Army Corps of Engineers. It was developed by the Army Corps, mostly to deal with airport runways. The, if, the way that our Congress allocated funding for airport runways used to be based upon, for lack of better terms, you know, the good old boy system. And whoever was the best good old boy got their airport runway repaved more often than somebody else. So what the engineers did is we took all of that politics and emotion out of it and developed a system where we look at the condition of the road, including the subbase, and come up with different rankings, very similar to school grades, where we rank all of the different streets. And then we assign to those ranks what pavement method of repair would be best for that. So if you have a fairly new street, maybe it's like five to seven years old, we'll just put a slurry seal on that and get it looking good again. Other streets that have fallen down might need the rehabilitation work that we're looking at right here. And that's at the bottom end of the scale. And then in between there will be streets that just need like, you know, cold mill and a new AC overlay cap, and they're good. And all of those are put into the computer program with associated costs. And then what we tell the computer is that we've got X number of dollars for the entire city for this year to fix pavement. What are the best streets available to do that? And that's where the lists come from. If we had infinite funds and what have you, all of those streets that you are concerned about, and rightfully so, would certainly be on the list. But considering the amount of money that we have, we have to narrow it down. And, you know, every year, or actually every two years, we come forward with our pavement management plan. And you should know that we need about $32 million a year right now and that number is going to continue to kind of go up. We are putting a lot more money into pavement and trying to keep that dollar amount, to keep it from going up. That's the goal. And so what I'm trying to tell you is we're fighting a very difficult battle right now. And if you.
Two of my questions, I don't mean to stop you, but I think you already answered my question. What's the definition of an arterial street? Because I have roads like Cerillian and Longdon looks like a black sand beach at this point. There's no asphalt left.
Yes.
And Topaz is in bad shape. I mean, are those considered arterials or are those residential streets? Or what's the definition of that?
Those are actually called collector streets. Back in the old system, we had residential streets, collector streets, and arterial streets. And the collector streets are basically branch off of the residential and then feed into the arterial. So all the streets that you just mentioned are collectors. We have, a lot of those streets are being pushed together and put into the just two classifications and that coincides mostly with what the state and federal government are doing. They just want to, they want to reduce the number of classifications in order to facilitate their funding methods. So with that, we are well aware of those streets. And as soon as, these streets will take a higher precedence over collectors, which will take a higher precedence over arterials. And the reason is, is these streets will carry the majority of the traffic. So if I could spend a million dollars on streets that carry 50,000 vehicles a day as opposed to residential streets that may carry 1,000 vehicles a day between all the residential streets, what I'm doing is I'm limiting my liability. Because you are much more likely, if you have a pothole on an arterial street and a motorcyclist hits it, then I have to involve Omar more than I want to. And as opposed to a pothole on a residential street where you're only supposed to be going 25 miles an hour, well, the odds are that I'm not going to, you know, maybe, the damages would be significantly less. So that's why we, out of all of those things, you also take into account the class of the street and that's why.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
I have a quick note. So earlier, we talked about the approval for the bicycle project. And it's actually on Garden Grove from Brookhurst to Magnolia. In this request here, you have similar, it's on the same street, Garden Grove from Brookhurst to Gilbert. So my question to you is that, any benefit if they work together somewhat? That it will save the time, avoid the, you know, the traffic or whatever? I do not know. I just want you to.
Well, we will have to put something down. Unfortunately, there are two different funding mechanisms. The state did that for some reason, which makes putting things together very difficult. Because then you start mixing funding sources. We are going to definitely make an attempt to do that. But if, depending on RJ Noble's schedule, and then you've got a different contractor that you're working on with the striping, and those have to come together. We're going to make them do the best we can. But immediately, we have to get striping back on the streets as soon as possible because that is a liability issue. So there may be, in fact, a little bit of waste in that. But we're well aware of their plans and we're going to do our best to incorporate them.
I am not asking about, you know, the funding in term of working or matching or whatever. My question would relate to the downtime for the resident, you know, like how you do that in front of their house or in front of the business. Now they have to wait until you're done. And so I just wonder if they work together, maybe somehow make the best possibilities that way avoid the time for people to get, you know, cranky because people keep working in front of my house, right?
In terms of time, the work that we're doing will be significantly time intensive. The striping is very quickly done. They're not going to be in front of your house longer than, you know, an hour or two at the most. And that's not going to be just your house, that's going to be the segment of the street. They, those are, the street painters are pretty much automated and go really quickly now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Motion, anyone?
I'm sorry, who was the first?
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. Ordinance is presented for a second reading and adoption, 8A.
Item 8A is a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2942, entitled, "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an ad valorem tax override and the setting of the tax rate of said override."
Do I have a motion and a second?
Yeah, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Called a vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, matters from mayor and council members. We do have one item listed per request of City Manager Lisa Kim regarding water rate study update, 9A.
And Samuel Kim will be providing that report.
Mr. Mayor and Members of City Council, my name is Samuel Kim, your Water Services Manager. As you are aware, the city has to retain the services of FG Solutions for water rate study. Tonight, we have an update for you. We have Mr. Art Griffith from FG Solutions provide a presentation.
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, thank you very much. My name is Art Griffith with FG Solutions, and I'm here tonight to talk about your water system and the water rate study. This is a project that is in progress. This is the first study session, and no council decisions are expected tonight. What I'm gonna talk to you tonight, I'm gonna introduce the water rate study, I'm gonna provide an overview of the water system. We're gonna talk about accomplishments since the last rate study was completed in 2018. There are some current issues that affect the water system that we're gonna talk about. And then we're gonna talk about a five-year financial plan from fiscal year '23, '24 to '27, '28. After that, we'll talk about next steps, and this is a study session, we'd like to get your feedback as well. Thank you. So why do a water rate study? This goes back to the mission of the city and the goal of the Water Services Division. The mission of the city is to provide responsible leadership and quality services. The water system, Water Services Division goal is to provide sufficient and safe water at the lowest possible cost to the city's residents. What is a water rate study? A water rate study projects utility revenues, expenses, and rates for a five-year period. It defines how to pay for water system repairs and capital improvements, and it defines a cost-to-service-based schedule of rates that incorporates the city's needs. Tonight, we're gonna talk about revenues and expenses and funding for water system repairs and capital improvements. We're not talking about the specific rate schedule, that will come later in a future study session. So, description of water system facilities. Eighty-five percent of the water supply is groundwater from Orange County. Fifteen percent of your water supply is from the state water project, that comes from far away. Your water pipe, you have about four, over 400 miles of water pipe in your system, and if laid end to end, it would stretch to San Francisco. There are 13 wells, eight reservoirs, 34,000 service connections, and when installed, it cost $153 million to put all of the city-owned water infrastructure in. But in today's dollars, that would be $400, $800 million to replace it. So you are managing a sizable investment in infrastructure, most of which is underground. This is a map. The purple lines on the map show, those are the water pipes. And the, the squares, the colored rectangles and triangles, those are all the water system facilities, the reservoirs, the booster pumps, the treatment facilities, and they are distributed throughout the city, as are your customers and your water pipes. Switch gears a little bit. Now I'm gonna talk about what the Water Services Division has done since the last rate study in 2018. There is a table with a list of projects, I'm gonna talk about some of them in more detail. The picture is from inside one of your reservoirs. The bench along the edge that you can see that curves, that's called a seismic curve. That was installed to make the reservoir function better in the event of an earthquake. It's at the West Haven Reservoir Site. The West Haven Site has two 10-million-gallon reservoirs, they're buried underground. The improvements that the city completed required excavation. You can see the excavation around the reservoir site. So that seismic curve was put inside, and on top was a membrane, so that water doesn't get into the reservoir. Those are just some of the improvements that were done at the reservoir site. This is a picture of water main replacement. You can see the trench, and you can see the blue pipe along the bottom, and you can see what it takes to replace water mains. And since the last water rate increase, the city's replaced over 18,000 feet of pipe. They're done to make sure that the water mains can continue to provide sufficient and safe water supply, and also to address the need to provide fire flow. Other completed projects, there is an improvement at well 21. It cleaned the well, redeveloped the well, refurbished the pump motor, and replaced the pump. Water service lines are also part of what the city does. The water service line is what brings water from the main in the street to your house. A water master plan was completed, that's an engineering analysis. And what that does is it provides a roadmap and defines what capital improvements are necessary to meet the, the system requirements. And then just as the city completed well improvements at well 21, the city's evaluating other wells to make sure that they stay on top of keeping the wells operable. That's what was done. This is what's currently in progress. So currently in progress are similar reservoir upgrades at the Magnolia Site. This project's almost done. The SCADA system, Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. This is a multi-phase project to upgrade and rehabilitate outdated SCADA systems. One of the contracts for that you just approved. It gives staff the ability to manage and control the water system remotely. It's what allows the reservoirs and the well pumps to communicate with each other, so the well pumps turn on when they need to, and the reservoirs are always full. Also ongoing, additional water services replacements and water meter replacements, another reservoir rehabilitation at the Lamson Site and at the Trask Reservoir Site, and then some additional water service, water main replacements. So that's what your division is working on right now. Here are some current issues that affect the water utility on an ongoing basis now. PFOS, water conservation, and ongoing capital. So we're gonna talk about PFOS. What is PFOS? PFOS is a set, a series of chemicals used in industrial and consumer projects since the 50s. They're used, had a lot of commercial applications and firefighting foams, some of them had PFOS containing in them too. The Environmental Protection Agency has indicated that exposure to these compounds over certain levels can have adverse health effects. So the State of California put a regulatory standard in, and because of that, the city partnered with Orange County Water District to build water treatment facilities. Orange County Water District paid for the capital, the city's responsible for the O&M, the cost to operate them, with some partial reimbursement from Orange County Water District on the O&M costs. Right now, the existing regulation requires treatment at five different sites. Four of them are operational, they all started up within the last two years. One is under, an additional, the fifth one is under construction right now. And this is what they look like. So you can see in these pictures, this is at the West Haven Reservoir Site, the tan cylinders are, have the ion exchange resin in them, and the gray cylinders are pre-filtered, the water goes from the well through the gray cylinders into the tan tanks. You can see all the pipes and the valves that are required. So this is an example, the other PFOS facilities around the city are very similar to that, similar equipment. But there's new PFOS regulations. This is promulgated by the Environmental Protection Agency on the federal level. So what does that mean? Well, what that means is that additional well sites will require PFOS treatment. And the method of funding will be similar. Orange County Water District's paying for the capital, city's responsible for O&M with a partial reimbursement. So why are we talking about this? We're going to be later tonight talking about a financial plan, and these PFOS regulations require money to pay for. So you'll see expenses for PFOS treatment where there weren't any before. Mandatory water use objectives. This is in response to a state law that established on a system-wide basis, a level of water use in four different categories. Residential indoor use, water loss, leaks, residential outdoor use, and you'll see the, the letter CII, that's commercial, institutional, and industrial, outdoor use. This does not establish a budget for any specific customer, but what it does is, system-wide, provides a boundary, if you will, of how much water the entire system should use. And there are target objectives that need to be met by 2027. So what does this mean? It means that the city has to invest in infrastructure, in leak repairs, in leak detection, maybe meter replacement, and some targeted public outreach where they didn't have to before. You'll see that in the financial plan. Ongoing capital needs. This is a list of some of the improvements. I'll show you a more detailed version of this table later. But there's future water main replacements, construction at well 19, a transmission line study, and continued water service and meter replacements. So now we're gonna talk about the financial plan. What is a financial plan? It's a year-by-year projection of revenues and expenses, covering capital spending, cost to operate and maintain the system, includes the new treatment costs for the PFOS treatment. It considers future costs, current costs, has inflation built into it, and what it does not do yet is talk about the monthly service charges and the commodity charges, the specific components of your water rates. That will come later this summer. So here are the projected water system expenses. You see a table in front of you, each column is a year, the rows are the main categories of your water system expenses. The total at the bottom, between about $50 and $55 million each year for, to operate and maintain and provide capital for your water system. That's the, that is what is projected, again with the goal of sufficient and safe water. You can see some of the categories as well. The biggest category is water supply. That is costs to Metropolitan Water District and Orange County Water Districts for water supply, which you have no control over. Personnel, those are staff costs. Other O&M expenses include administrative charges to the general fund for services provided. It includes a street damages component because of the impact of the water system vehicles. You can see the PFOS O&M costs, how, a couple of years ago, that was zero. Now it's starting to increase, and as that new regulatory deadline hits, it starts to really increase. You can see how that increases from just under $3 million to over $10 million a year. Water use objectives, that is the leak detection, water leak, meter replacement, excuse me, and some targeted public outreach. There's debt service. You have issued debt. The debt service goes down because there is some debt that you're about to pay off next year. And then you can see the capital repair and replacement. Again, I'll show you a table of what all of those projects are. Please note that the water supply costs are in today's, with today's costs. There will be future increases in water supply costs. The cost that Metropolitan Water District charges the city is going to go up. But you have something called a pass-through adjustment, which you consider and adopt on an annual basis, that allows you to pass through those costs that you have no control over and don't know what they are yet, at a later date. As you can see, the PFOS O&M costs increase as the new facilities come online. Here's the same data in a graph. So going up is dollars and millions, and across are years. So you can see the blue band at the bottom, that's wages and personnel costs for your staff. The thick green band is the water supply costs. The purple band that starts off being pretty skinny but gets a lot fatter, that's the PFOS O&M costs. And then the blue band at the top, that's the capital improvements. That's for all of the capital improvements and repair and replacement. Here are the projected PFOS costs in similar format. So you can see that they increase, and the biggest component is ion exchange resin changeouts. The ion exchange is the heart of the PFOS treatment, but it doesn't last forever. It, it gets used up as it removes PFOS, and you have to replace it. So as more facilities come online, and they're online for a while, that's the estimate of what it will cost to replace that on an annual basis. There's other, there's some other costs that are much smaller, the, because you're putting these treatment plants in, it takes a little bit more power, be it an operator hired to operate the facilities, and there's some other components of the treatment plant that require ongoing maintenance costs. And you can see there is expected to be a partial reimbursement of your O&M costs, but it does not come close to paying for the entirety of the operation of these facilities. Here's the capital improvement plan. So a lot of numbers, a lot of projects, I'm not gonna go over all of them right now, but I'm gonna point to a few highlights. The Magnolia Reservoir Project, that's almost done. You can see that there's just a little bit left in there. The SCADA system improvement is gonna be done in a series of contracts. I think number four is what you approved tonight. Lots of pipe replacement. Orange Wood and Yorkshire Avenue, Chapman and Dale Street, and then at the very bottom is water main replacement as well. So it's a continued commitment of the city to reinvest in the water system with the goal of meeting the division's goal of safe and sufficient water supply. Okay, so now, we're going back to that graph that showed all of your expenses, and there's a yellow line in that graph right now. That yellow line is your revenues under your existing rates. So this is what would happen if your revenues don't change, or if your rates don't change. And what you see is your expenses are greater than your revenues. And initially, in the next fiscal year, that's by design. You have water, you have reserves, and you have capital needs, and you have plenty of reserves to spend a little bit of that on your water system and reinvest in your infrastructure. But over time, especially as the PFOSs increase, you're, you would be continuing with this capital improvement program to spend more than your revenues under your existing rates, and you don't have that much revenue, or you don't have that much reserves. So the area above the yellow line is where you would be using your reserves. Your existing rates do not collect enough to pay for your operating expenses, the projected capital improvements, while maintaining your system reserves and meeting your bond covenants. You have borrowed money, you have rate covenants that you have to make. So what do we do? So this is with the projected expenses and the projected capital improvement program. This is the financial plan. I'll show you some numbers here in a minute. But the intent is to find out what it takes so that after five years, your revenues are sufficient to fund your system expenses, your replacement and your capital, while maintaining your reserve balances. The city has established policies on how much it wants, or how much it must maintain in reserves. So this shows a regular progression of revenue increases. And here are the numbers. So this is, the top line is revenue increases, not including the future pass-throughs. The projection is five and a half percent per year. And this is revenue increases, it's not a rate schedule yet, it's not talking about the bi-monthly charge, it's not talking about your tier-one, tier-two commodity charges or any of that. Also, future increases in water supply can be estimated, although they haven't been adopted yet. So Orange County Water District has provided us some guidance on what they think those are gonna be. Metropolitan Water District has a 10-year long-term financial plan, so we have a sense of what they think they're gonna be now. And so those over five years, these numbers are cumulative, so it would be the second year of the rate study, a 12-cent increase in your commodity charge, and then that 12 cents would become 23. So these are cumulative, they don't, you don't add them all together. We don't know what those costs are gonna be now, we just have an estimate. Those are what you adopt every year, if, or you consider every year. So that is the summary of the financial plan. The next steps are to talk about it. We'll answer your questions, receive your feedback. If there are any changes to this revenue requirement, financial plan, put your feedback, we'll make them. We're developing a proposed rate structure, and the future study sessions will come back to you with that. And then if you're okay with a rate, a proposed rate structure, then we would proceed with the public engagement. Schedule, we plan on having another conversation next month, at the end of the month, with a preliminary rate schedule. The goal is to have draft rate study results in August, public engagement in September. And if all of that is acceptable, then the Proposition 218 notification would happen this fall, for you to consider for adoption towards the end of the year with increases, if any, in January of 2024. So that's the end of my presentation. We are definitely welcome, or please ask any questions you'd like. questions you'd like. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, colleagues. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Thank you. Very thorough staff report. And I'm, you know, I'm glad you kind of spelled out for the public, especially with the added increased cost that is associated with the PFOS removal. You know, when I was elected initially, I was screaming about PFOS. And quite frankly, nobody had heard of it. And, well, I shouldn't say nobody, but I brought it up to our then-city manager, and he's like, "What's this?" And I'm like, so I had to do a little education. And I think you guys already knew about it, but very few others did. And you guys ran with that. And you guys, staff, made a great deal with the county to get them to fund our, and you know, we became one of the very first cities to have active PFOS filtering in the county as a result of that. So I'm really happy about that. But there is a cost associated with that. We want to make sure our water is safe, clean. And, you know, it is. It is. We've got some of the best water in the county, quite frankly. And, you know, I hear people complain, "Oh, my water's brown," or this or that. And whenever it gets looked at, it's not our water supply. It's actually their pipes in their house that have made it, you know, that. So there is an increased cost. And, you know, you know, last week, that Poseidon project got derailed, the final nail in the coffin of it. Thank God, had that boondoggle passed, our water rates would have tripled here in Garden Grove. They were going to force us all to buy their D-Sal water at triple the rate. So that supply cost would have been really big. And we would have had no say over that. So, you know, I think the added safety that our water has, and not having to pay that extra expense that Poseidon would have brought to us had it, had it succeeded, I think, you know, it's warranted. We do need to start looking at funding for the ongoing maintenance and whatnot. So thank you again for the very educational presentation.
Question, what is our mandated reserves percentage-wise of the budget?
There are three different pots. And so it is, gets 90 days of ONM expenses for an operating reserve, 5% of your net depreciable assets for a capital reserve, and $500,000 for an emergency reserve.
Oh, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
Yes, thank you for your very thorough report tonight. But I'm going to reserve many of my questions for the rate studies in July and August, being that's a very long meeting tonight. But I have more than a dozen questions. But I'm just going to ask a couple tonight. One is, just last week, Thursday, we had a settlement from 3M. 3M pays $10.3 billion to settle water pollution sued over four ever chemicals. So talking about PFAS. When are we going to see some of that money? It's supposed to trickle down to our cities.
So the settlement was announced, but the court has to approve it. It has to go through a legal process to be finalized. So we're at the very, very beginning of those discussions. And after the settlement, if, if our area is part and we agree to participate in the settlement, because still, we still would have to agree to participate, then there will be distributions. And then the distribution will be subject to our agreement with OCWD. The agreement does provide that the settlement, any settlement, because we do have litigation, right? And the agreement provides a settlement would be in proportion to the damages for each participating agency. And then there is an attachment, and I have memorized it. I'm not as good as, as our consultant. So, but I do know in general, it's based on the proportion of the damages for each participating agency, because each agency has different-sized systems and different requirements. We don't install PFOS unless it's tested at the level that the state and now the federal government requires treatment. And so, again, I think we're still a lot of months before we actually see a final settlement and final number.
So the short of that answer is, we should have some money coming, but we don't know when. And we don't know how much, because it's based on the studies and testing. And at this point, we don't even know if we're going to qualify for any grant, if the grant is even coming at some point in time. It's got to work its way through the courts and through the settlements, and then actually get to the states, and then county, and then cities. If anybody's going to know, it's OCWD. So that leads me to the next question, is, we have a council member here, former council member, Deanna Nguyen, who's now on OCWD. She's a director there. So if you haven't gone to OCWD meetings, or been briefed by them on the latest development, because they are to reimburse us for certain costs, right? So I want, I want to work and coordinate with the information coming from them. What are they putting out? And are we going to their meetings? Are we getting information for OCWD? Because they are going to be a partner, a full partner. And we're talking about a quarter-billion dollar here in five years that we're expending. At 50,000, 55, 50 to 55 million a year for the next five years. That's a quarter-billion dollar for one city of 200,000 people. And we're going to spread that cost to our taxpayers with a rate hike. And they're going to ask the question, where's our $10 billion settlement? When are we getting it? And why is OCWD, if that's what they're doing, part of their responsibility is to offset our cost. And if the testings don't come back that requires all of this expenditure, I'm not going to vote for a dang thing. That's it.
Just a quick comment. You know, part of, part of the agreement we made, and I know you weren't here, so you weren't pervy to it, to get, we wanted to get those PFOS active fast, and they're very, very expensive. And we made a deal with the county. And the county, correct me if I'm wrong, Omar, but the county is going to take the legis, they're putting it in, and then they're doing all the lawsuit activity, I should say, you know. And they're going to reclaim their money from that before we get anything. So it's not as big as you think it is, because the cost of that was basically fronted by the county. And it's very expensive equipment, the PFOS.
Yeah, so OCWD is fronting all of the capital costs for installing the system, including the design. All we're providing is the property at our well locations. And they're also paying for 50% of the operation and maintenance. And yes, part of the agreement is that if we do get a settlement, they will recover a lot of those costs first.
Okay. And if I missed something when I walked out and used the men's room, I don't see any numbers from OCWD committed that I saw reported tonight. Am I correct?
OCWD, in fact, paid for all of the filters that we have and all the filters.
I don't see any numbers tonight. Was those numbers on the slides that you reported tonight?
No, sir. Number's not on it.
Okay. I want to see those numbers in my rate studies session in July and August.
Yeah, I'd second that, too. I'd like to see that information. I think, I think Gelsmundo Ben's a good idea. And it provides transparency for the community, so we can explain. So I think that's a good idea to include that on those slides.
All righty. Thank you very much for the update session. And we look forward to more dialogue in the near future. That will take us on to just general matters. So starting with Mayor Pro Tem George Pedigame.
Well, thank you very much. First, I just want to wish everybody a very happy Fourth of July coming up. Please be safe. We had a presentation today, our fire chief and a police captain, that, you know, we had some injuries last year. There was one in my district where a teenage kid was severely injured, severely injured. A mortar went off. He was holding it up, and it just blew. And fortunately, he didn't die. But he's going to have some lifelong ramifications from that. Please, they're not safe, those, you know, those illegal fireworks. There's no quality control. They're, you know, mostly made in China, and they're just shipped over here. It's not worth your kids, it's not worth your loved ones' safety. Don't like those. We allow the safe and saens. All the proceeds go to nonprofits for our city. Please just stick with those. There's really no need for all the illegal ones. And it, just, just, just be safe out there. The Los Almeidos Reserve Center is famous for doing the Fourth of July spectacular every year on the Fourth of July. But they're not doing it on the Fourth of July this year. They're going to be doing it on the Third of July. I have no idea why. But that's, that's what they got going there. So I just want to remind everybody, if you are planning on going there, I know they pack out, and that place is a zoo. If you're planning on being there on the Fourth, they're going to be closed. Nothing's going on. And they're going to do that on the Third this year. And lastly, myself and the Chamber of Commerce have partnered up to do a small business forum. We're inviting all the Garden Grove small business owners to attend. It's going to be at the West Grove Park Community Center, July 18th at 5:00 p.m. We'll have folks from the city, the county, SBA, SBC, all the different things, all the different programs available for small businesses. We're going to be moving this, this is open to the whole city, if you have a small business. However, we're going to be moving them to all the districts one at a time. So if you want to wait for the closer one to, you know, yours, you're more than welcome to. So anyway, they'll be moving, moving throughout the city and within the next year or so. But the Chamber of Commerce is going to partner up with all the different council members for their districts and do this kind of thing. So anyway, the one we're doing, it will be July 18th, 5:00 p.m. If you own a small business, it could probably be very beneficial for you to be there. You'll probably learn some stuff that you didn't even know, and might, might save you some money in running your business. So without any further ado, we'll move on to John.
John. Okay, real quick, just want to wish everybody safe and sane, happy Fourth of July coming up. I want to just remind everybody about, you know, pool safety and those kinds of things. There's a lot of good resources on our website in Garden Grove. And also, the links to OCFA has a wealth of videos and information there. Speaking of that, I was able to speak on behalf of the city, as the, as the vice chair of the Fire Authority, at their last graduation. So they graduated a new academy, Academy 57. Always good to see a whole new group of firefighters coming in, serving our community. And, and a lot of Garden Grove folks have been promoted that came over from here over at the OCFA. Also, council member Tran and myself, a couple Saturdays ago, we opened a new restaurant over there in District 2, next to the Regal Theater. That was kind of fun. S365 veggie, Vietnamese, and Korean food. It's right next, on the right-hand side of the Regal, if you're facing the Regal. So patronize them if you can. That's all I have. Thank you.
So I apologize to the council, just a little bit longer than usual. Just because when I went to the election, I said that the first six months, people asking, "What are you going to do?" And so today, I just want to do a really, really quick kind of capture that. The first one was about park and sport field. So you already know that I have been asking our staff many times about, you know, the breakdown of all the costs, what, what are the costs that way when we go ask the legislature? We know how much we ask and where we ask, and whether it's for, for street improvement or for mental health, et cetera. So we have a meeting with our staff, city manager, Maria and John from park. And the one thing that I noted, a lot of time, we always try to catch up, meaning we fix the item that have big safety issue. And that's why we keep doing that. We would never have time or have money to build something nice unless we get like some big donor like what Councilor Kim got for her district. So after talking to the staff, we were saying that, okay, it doesn't have to be in my district, but any district, can we pick a project that so that way we could focus on asking for money. So after talking, the staff came up with Atlantic Park. That's the play that we have a lot of nice little thing for kids to play, and a lot of people visit. But now we have issue or thing that need to be improved. For example, the little turtle, you know, the gnaw, got peel off the paint, et cetera. So we were talking about if the staff would come up with the breakdown cost for each item, and we're going to bring up, bring that up and say that with our community. So if anyone, any donor would like to sponsor one of that, just like how Councilman George Pedigame doing with the, the strawberry set, right? So people could donate to, you know, to donate for an item for the park, and then there would be, you know, ingredient or whatever. So that is something that our staff will have to work with Omar, and then community foundation, just to see how we could make that happen. But I'm really excited, because I think that would be something that the city or the citizen would be able to support and help. And also, when we ask people, we know exactly what we're looking for. Right now, we don't have that number. And then yesterday, we actually had, went to Sancho High School to do the ribbon cutting for the sport field. Beautiful. I love that, because, you know, as a running track before, and I would love to see that for our park, too. And that's what people asking me about. But when I asked, I said, "Oh, it's going to cost, it costs $1 million." And that's a big number. So I don't know where we're going to get that money, but we will work on it somehow. Thanks to our staff for the concert at the park. That was the first one for our summer concert. It was so much fun. I was there dancing with the resident all the way to the end, and get on the stage and do some cheering. So I think the next couple are going to be in the East Gate, right? So just want to invite our resident to come and have fun. Just relax, listen to music, and, you know, dance if you want to. The second part, I want to mention it, the housing and homeless. So as you could see all this time, I have advocate for, you know, different things. I went to meet the homeless. I went with the police department, you know, go to talk to them, or go with the Be Well, or Moving Forward, and do the cleanup. And, you know, we have the navigation center that we just did the groundbreaking. So I went to the Anaheim Affordable House last week, where they have the open house for official, elected official. And the one thing that, you know, when you go, you learn and see what the good thing to bring it back to our city. And it was amazing. Not just having the building, they have the, you know, the usual thing with the park and the school for the kid. They also have the sand, sand juice inside that they provide all the service for free. So any resident would be able to come there to talk about mental issue or anything. Besides that, they also have optometric and medical office inside. And then they have the school for the kindergarten, younger, and then the area for kids to do studying. It's just a lot of things that I think we could bring it back to our city. And I couldn't wait to see something like that. Not just having a building for people to live with their, you know, dignity, with beautiful house and beautiful pool and nice places, but also all the services there. They don't have to go anywhere. They also partner to get, you know, mail to deliver there, too. So that's it for the housing and homelessness. The next part is about the visit and anything else. And as you see, that a lot of time, our city council member got invited to ribbon cutting or opening for businesses. I have been gone to many of them. I can't even remember how many. But like council member just mentioned about the S365. But also, beside that, I have been working with the Chamber of Commerce, making the connection between our Chamber of Commerce with the business owner, talking to them about different funds and different opportunity that they could get from our city. Yesterday, I talked to another business owner that just opened a business in our city, and they want to do the opening soon. And so I make that connection with the Chamber of Commerce, so that way they would be able to get the resources from our city. So still working on that. And then, you know, we just went through the graduation season, where a lot of people graduate. I went to many of them. And I also, to support our community, I donate for four different scholarships. This one of them, $500 for working with a nonprofit group in our city. And that, those four scholarships were given to our student and our category city. And that, and then- And that, and then the last item is about Christmas light, I know that we, I talked about this when I first got selected, and sitting here, um, at the die, talking about, can we come up with something in term of, um, encourage people to do more, uh, light for the Christmas time, you know, just, not just, uh, bringing the, um, the holiday spirit, but also, you know, make something bright, and people compete, and then, you know, decorate their house. So I know that Councilman Stefan, Stefan Lee Corvinsen been doing that with the gym, um, and we have the winner tonight, but I think that if we could do something like that, um, I do not want to take time, you know, more time from our staff, even if just a website for them to go and sign up, and with their email, and then if you need, I could create a script just to run, so that way, we would have, um, you know, one entry per, uh, email address, or something like that, that is some, but I think that would be bringing something fun to our city. And before I end here, uh, earlier, I voted no on, um, the, uh, the selection for Planning Commissioner. I always, um, I feel that, um, I always want to encourage people volunteer in doing something for our community, and I appreciate, and I, I feel, you know, like, that's it, they take the extra step to volunteer, and wanting to do something good for our city, but when I vote no, I vote no, we're not, because I vote no about the person, it were more about the process, than how we did it. So that's it for me, and I'm looking forward to the next six months, I feel so amazing sitting here with all the, you know, council member who really supporting in everything that we do, amazing staff, and every time I go to our city talking to people, we always hear compliments, and then when there's something that do not work, we reach out to the police or our staff, they took care of it, by the way. So, um, I appreciate, and I really happy just to sit here, and thank you. That was it.
Good job.
Um, yeah, it's a long meeting, so I'll be brief, but I think there's a few important things I need to sum up after this, I think, very consequential meeting, and I'm happy to have our mayor back, we missed you last time, and it's always nice to have a full council with our mayor here, and we all, uh, give our feedbacks and weigh in on every issue. We spend a lot of time asking questions and making comment, it's for the benefits of our residents, especially those at home or not here. Now, I completely appreciate our residents who come in here, and you sit through the whole meeting, and you give us our, your three minutes, and we appreciate that, that persistency, that's what motivates me to public service, because we fight for you, but you also have to fight for us. We have to fight together, so we can, uh, deliver the best services to our city. Now, I'm very concerned about the water rate, I don't take it lightly. If anybody get a red knocker on their front door, which I've had numerous times, to go pay your water bill, you'll feel the pain. The water rates going up is nothing to, uh, not spend a lot of time on, and I insist on getting numbers from OCWD and their commitment, and any level of government who's willing to fund us, and I know our city manager and our A-Team leave no stone unturned, when it comes to getting grants and fundings, because we desperately need it going into the next five years. Now, we just passed a biennial budget, it looks great, I ran on transparency, accountability, and fiscal, fiscal conservatism, and I think my colleagues agree, we delivered that, but we have to continue to deliver that, so we not, we don't take it lightly, or responsibility to oversee every expenditures, and tonight, I voted on several expenditures, which I'm very happy about, the bike trails, that's a good thing, okay? We're spending money in the right direction, the, um, added flock system, I'm all for that. If we can get those granted, it'll help our detectives, it'll crack cases. This week alone, I had two burglaries reported to me, in my district, four, and I reported that to our detectives, who were promptly on it, and was in constant contact with the victim, and I hope that case will get cracked soon, but I've heard that people are concerned about doing business in Garden Grove if they have fear of burglary, and other crimes. Now, ten years ago, Maria and I, we went to Korea in the twenty thirteen council, and we saw what a smart city looks like. The concept of a smart city, and I bring that with me right here on the dais, because I want our city to have that kind of, of a upgrade, and they had green technology, they had smart technology, they used like a flock system, and they, they have no traffic accidents that doesn't go unsolved, because they have all these camera, but I'm concerned about privacy, I don't want all that surveillance, right? We all, we don't want, you know, Big Brother watching over us all day long, but if these systems are gonna help us crack cases and catch criminals, not necessarily that our locals here, but people from out of town coming into, you know, they're opportunistic. So those are the kind of things that I think are very positive development, and I'm speaking to not just people here, but people at home who watch GGTV, Channel Three, and it's not just our residents, it's people all around the state, if not beyond, our neighboring cities, they're watching us, I have friends at home watching us, and they're residents of other city, so they're watching us, and every step we make, we have to answer up to our citizens. So I'm happy that our mayor's back, and, uh, we gonna have a nice Fourth of July celebration, and come back even stronger, and work even harder. But, uh, I've, I'm getting more reports from my residents now that they know I'm on council, I got calls about sprinklers broken at Atlantis, and it's got fixed, and I, I had to text the city manager about broken sprinkler, because the citizens were timing and seeing how much volume of water is being wasted by a broken sprinkler, and then there were two of them. So people are very concerned, they're watching us down to the detail, and they're asking us to look into Garden Grove Park and Atlantis, and how to upgrade our neighborhood parks and rec centers, because in June, we have a lot of graduations, so people are in the Garden Grove Park, they ha, they, they see things, and they're calling me, and says, can we spend some more money on trees, and plantings, and improving our parks? And that's a great thing to, to ha, to have, uh, it's not a problem, it's something we should work on, and all the feedbacks from the citizens, I, I thank you to all the people who's making these reports, and our staff has been very responsive. But two blocks from where I live, we had a major fire, right there, on the Marie Calendar, Central and Brookhurst, and that whole building is coming down, it's gonna be totally demolished. I had a crew working on electricity outside, and they had to stop because of the pollution, they, they can't work, they were choked up with the smoke in that area, they're like a block away. So these are, these are real events that impacts our community, our residents, and our building, staff and, and management is working overtime, so whatever we can support them with, with more staffing, uh, we, we need to step it up, because they're working overtime to take care of these problems, and I thank you of all the staff, and also all the residents who see something, say something, report it to your council persons, and we deal with it. There, we don't have to, um, uh, we're not ignoring anything, so whatever comes, I hear about, I'll let staff know, I'll report back to the council, and we'll work on it together. Thank you.
Stephanie.
Thank you. I wanna congratulate the GG Jam winners, both the winner and runner-ups, uh, for their, they're getting their little gnome awards this evening, and we honored them again here at the council meeting. It takes a lot to keep up your property to that extent, things are, prices are going up, there's a lot of costs, so to be able to beautify your home and spend that time and attention, it means a lot, and we're grateful to you for doing it, and congratulations again. Concerts in the Park, the Community Foundation has another one this Thursday, it'll be on Main Street, Yachty by Nature is the band, so if you're into yacht rock, this is your night. Um, and at the last concert, which was the Thursday before, um, I had the honor to kind of emcee and, and bring the band onstage, and our Assembly Member Tretaw was, uh, in attendance, and he presented the Community Foundation with the Nonprofit of the Year Award. So we were very honored to receive that, the Community Foundation, um, if I can toot their horn a little bit, uh, just so much for the community, not just Concerts in the Park, but providing money to different, uh, civic groups and service, uh, communities throughout Garden Grove, and, uh, they're just a legacy to this community, um, the clock tower, you, just in so many ways, they've touched the residents and, and the neighbors of Garden Grove, so this was a big deal, and we're really grateful to, um, the Assemblymen for that award. Uh, and then finally, I wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, and we talked about the fireworks and block parties, and not setting off illegal fireworks, but let's not forget about our pets, make sure you're securing and locking gates, keeping them inside if they're scared, uh, and obviously, we have animal control, I'm sure, ready as well, um, if, if need be, so have a happy Fourth, thank you.
Yep.
I'm gonna make you wait a little more, uh, City Manager Kim. Uh, first, I just wanted to, uh, thank Board President of Garden Grove Unified, Walter Muniton, for inviting me to the Santiago High School's ribbon cutting of their new athletics facilities. Uh, I'm a little jealous, but extremely happy for all the new students that will be able to utilize that space, as someone who did cross-country soccer and track, I have a lot of battle scars that would've been saved if we would've had that type of facility when I was there. I also want to shout out Caloptima Health, I'm really excited for Phase Two, when I met with them, uh, last year, as a, to gauge the interest of the City of Garden Grove's participation, uh, for partnership in street medicine, and taking over, um, a motel, and, you know, reconfiguring that, um, it went hand in hand with my efforts with Be Well OC and the Navigation Center, so I'm just so happy to see that come to fruition, and I need to remind myself to text former City Manager Scott Stiles, and kind of pat him on the back for that, because I know as soon as I had that meeting with them, I texted him right away, and then I made Lisa work on it, so thank you to City Manager Kim for that as well, for continuing on that work. I mean, now, the moment you've been waiting for, my big news of the night, sorry colleagues, I've been teasing the mayor and the city manager with this. I, to my surprise, received an amazing phone call this morning by Senator Tom Umberg, to let me know that the City of Garden Grove will be receiving four million dollars to support the operation and transportation needs of the Central City's Navigation Center during the first year of operation.
Fantastic.
So make sure when you see him, you give him big thanks, as he only represents a portion of Garden Grove now, so the fact that, I think this is the biggest budget allocation that he received was for the City of Garden Grove, and I want to thank immensely Assistant City Manager Maria and City Manager Lisa for, April twenty-sixth, around 3:00 PM, almost the end of the day, I demanded that they get on the phone with me, and prepare something to send over to, to the Senator's Office, to ensure that we were gonna receive funds, and so, if it was not for the hard work that they did at literally the eleventh hour, uh, to provide that information to them, we would not be receiving this grant funding, so I just want to thank staff for all of their hard work, um, in making this happen, and, uh, just really excited to get four million dollars to be able to put towards Central's Navigation Center. Thank you.
Fantastic.
City Manager Lisa Kim.
More for me, a dollar.
Yeah. You pulled a few of those out of your hat.
No.
Good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, um, I wasn't gonna add any remarks, but in light of Councilmember Nguyen, it's, uh, my birthday's in October, but this is a thankful, a very, a really wonderful early birthday gift, so appreciate that, uh, no more, I don't have any other updates.
All right, thanks. General Counsel, I believe we do have a need for a closed session, so we will...
Yes, we do have an item for closed session, uh, real estate negotiations.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that. Uh, so we'll formally close and adjourn the meeting thereafter, but, um, just, um, we'll, we'll end up closing the meeting tonight in honor of Baby Nolan Ren. Uh, closing tonight's meeting in memory of Baby Nolan Ren, who was born on June first, and very sadly passed away just fifteen days later on June sixteenth. Baby Nolan was the newborn son of Garden Grove Police Officer Danielle Ren, and her husband Christopher Ren. Little Nolan was immensely loved and will be deeply missed. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Ren family. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session, and then we'll formally close after that.